Good evening, councilors. I'd like to welcome everyone to our October 25th, 2022 city council meeting. My name is Val Gilman. I'm the council president and Ward four city councillor. In the interest of government transparency with regards to deliberations and decisions made by the city council and according to open meeting law, since this meeting was posted at the meeting, this meeting is recorded by video and audio and will be conducted by remote participation. Additionally, all votes taken by the city council during this and future remote meetings will be by roll call vote. If you're calling in on a phone, you can press star nine to request to speak. If you're watching on a computer or device, there's a raised hand button that you can tap or press to request to speak. Please use either of these options during oral communications to be recognized to speak. It's defining the City of Gloucester that no individual shall be denied equal treatment or opportunity because of their age, ancestry, color, disability, including intellectual and developmental mental disability, family status, immigration status, gender identity or expression, military status, marital status, national origin, race, religion, sex or sexual orientation. In this vein, we as city councils do not condone language that is discriminatory or defensive and will not accept that city meetings. I now like to announce the councilors that are on the call. I'm going to just start at the top. Council Jeff Worthley.
Hello, everybody.
Councillor Jason Groh. Councillor Sean Nolan, Ward five, and Council Vice President at large, Councillor Tony Gross. Ward one, City Councillor Scott Memmard. Ward two, City Councillor Tracy O'Neill. At large, Councillor Jamie O'Hara. And it looks to me like the only member of the council that is not here at this point is Frank Margiotta, who is our Ward three city councillor, and he is en route. He just sent me a text and said that he is running a little late in traffic, but he'll be here in a minute. I'd also like to introduce members of city staff that are on the call. Joanne Sinos, our city clerk. Thank you, Joanne. Ryan Knowles, who is our IT director, and Kenny Coster, who is our auditor. And that is it for now. So we will begin by asking the mayor of the city clerk to state the first order of business. Madam Clerk, thank you.
First order of business is oral communications.
Thank you. And I will introduce Jill Cahill, who is our CAO. Oral communications, the public shall have the opportunity at every regularly scheduled meeting to be heard under oral communications on matters not appearing on the agenda. Oral communications shall allow any resident who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to city business to appear before the council, state their problem without debate, and the matter shall be referred to the proper agency through the office of the mayor. The resident will be notified within a two-week period relative to the disposition of same, and a copy shall be forwarded to the city council. Person speaking under oral communications shall be limited to three minutes each. The council president shall not allow complaints as to individual performance. And I'd also like to introduce Frank Margiotta, who is here, and he is our Ward three city councillor. So is there anyone that is on the call that would like to speak on any matters not on the agenda? I see two people. So, Madam Clerk, if you could bring in one of the two, that would be great. And if you would introduce yourself, Val Nelson, it looks like you're first, introduce yourself and your ward, or your, I'm sorry, and your address. And you have up to three minutes to speak to the council. And let's see. Joanne, would you mind doing the timing and just raise your hand when the three minutes is up? Because we've got a full agenda tonight. So Val Nelson, welcome.
Yeah, thank you, Val. And I'm at Seven Sunset Point Road in Ward four, too. And I'm not here to complain. I'm actually on a very happy note. I would like to just offer a suggestion to the city council and the mayor's office to start to consider how to reopen the city council chambers to more widespread community use, such as back in the day. So I did invite all of you to come to the People Dance Dance at City Council Chambers on Saturday night. It was a rousing success. I want to say that the city has done, has Darren, your janitor in City Hall, did a marvelous job with that floor. It's a beautiful floor. And Public Works was great about all the arrangements. But not only did we have many memories of Finnish American dances in that very room, but since then, I've been talking, we'd like to maybe do a Sicilian dance. How many people across the community remember all of the use that the community made in the chambers? I've even heard that our mayor played basketball games there. So given that we're going into Gloucester 400+ great memories of and the widespread prior use of that beautiful room, that beautiful floor. If you could start to consider both on the council and the mayor's office, and how can they open up this glorious space again to more widespread use by the community in a variety of cultural and other kinds of events? And I can't speak more highly about how the people of Gloucester have valued it so much in the past and would like to get back. You know, say thanks for whatever you can do to encourage that kind of use. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Val. I heard it was a big success, and I loved seeing the photos. So thank you.
Yeah, it was. Thank you.
Can we bring in someone else? Madam Clerk? And just for, just a quick second, John, let's see, John Dunn is our CFO. He's on the call, and so is Suzanne Egan, who is general counsel, and Pam Toby, who is our Director of Constituent and Communications Services. Okay, next person on the call, I think it's Mary Ann. Mary Ann, would you introduce yourself and your address? And you have up to three minutes to talk to us. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Mary Ann Albert Boucher, 93 Montplaisan Avenue. I just wanted to bring to light the city council approved a consultant of $120,000 for the Good Harbor Beach Creek. There was supposed to be a report presented. I know, I don't know if the Board of Health has that report, but since the city is the one that approved $120,000 for the consultant, where can that report be found? The general public should be able to find it, find out where the problem lied, where the problem is, if the problem was fixed, what was the problem, and is the creek still closed to the general public? Although it's not summer weather, we still see people wading through it. Surf is wading through it. What's the CFU level of that creek now? Why have we not received any information on that creek to date? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Anyone else like to speak in public comments for up to three minutes for matters not on tonight's agenda?
I don't see any more hands up.
Okay, thank you. Seeing none, next order of business, Madam Clerk?
Next order of business is the city council update regarding hybrid meeting options for standing committees at the Harbor Masters Conference Room and possible council vote.
Right, thank you. So the, I'd just like to introduce this, this topic. I think everyone remembers from our October 11th meeting, we discussed the possibility of going back to full hybrid meetings at the Harbor Masters office for our three standing committees. And there were a handful of questions that came up. And because we did not have all of the answers, I committed to getting the answers to us back tonight so we could continue with this discussion. So I'm grateful that Ryan Knowles is here, our IT director, and he has taken all of the answers that were requested of our general counsel Suzanne Egan, our harbor master TJ Shimataro, Mike Hale, who is our Public Works Director, and Ryan had a lot of the questions that were asked of him. And then Joanne Sinos, who was asked different questions about the availability of the Harbor Masters office for our three standing committees, which meet on the first and third weeks of the month, on Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday nights. So I'm going to ask Ryan Knowles to take over the conversation and report on all the questions that have come up. And I know that you've done some slides, and I'm eager to share them with the council. Thank you, Ryan.
All righty. Can everyone see that okay?
Yes, thank you.
All right. So as, as Council President Gilman has noted, we, Joanne and she and myself spent a little time down at the Harbor Master office physically yesterday. So part of this presentation will be informed by that, part will be informed just by, as she said, a kind of distillation of the answers that were provided as part of the, the set that was kind of requested on the last meeting. So kind of as an overview, just to kind of sum where we are, you know, obviously as part of this ongoing discussion, we had a seven-two vote during the October 11th meeting to remain fully remote via Zoom until location could be available that could support both technically and physically a hybrid meeting for the full council. But during that meeting, obviously, we had the possibility of holding hybrid meetings for the subcommittees in the Harbor Masters Conference Room. But there were a number of questions raised regarding this option. So the purpose of this presentation is to provide the answers and context for those questions. The answers below are organized and condensed from Council President Gilman's helpful summary of questions for TJ Suzanne, Joanne, Mike Hale, and myself that were circulated on the 22nd. So please refer to that document for the full text and context of those, those answers. I've tried to kind of keep them all tighter and more like bullet points for this, for clarity. To start out, the Harbor Master Conference Room, the space itself, as was noted, it is a 28 by 30 space, so 840 square feet. It has 19 chairs in there. It has 24/7 access via keypad with the ability to schedule lock and unlock periods. Just to be a little, expand on that a little bit more. The idea there is that we wouldn't necessarily have to use the keypad function, especially if the public's coming in, kind of say, every Monday from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., that door is just unlocked. No one has to punch a keypad in or any of those pieces. So that's, that's kind of the, the deal with access. But again, that, that room is 24/7 access via the keypad. There's a 70-inch television with a mounted wide-angle camera speaker microphone device. It's the same device that we used at SFL. We kind of did our trial run there in June. It is, again, physically mounted on the bottom of the television there, so it doesn't require any, you know, it's SFL required, like some setup and plug-in and running cables around. Everything's kind of integrated in that space. There's a Wi-Fi access point directly overhead. I pointed it out, it's right over your head when you're in the room. So there's plenty of strong Wi-Fi signal in that room. One important note, I think, is that we did a little timed test with Council President Gilman and Joanne, and they were able to kind of do the setup and breakdown. I said around 45 seconds. I believe the official count was 43. So, you know, it was relatively simple, the tables and chairs, and they're very lightweight, they're on wheels, so, or casted, so they kind of move around very easily. There's not, you know, bugging things around, or, you know, you can easily move a table by yourself as well as chairs. Answer the question that we had about custodial. So custodial will be required when the building is open to the public. That is a requirement that Mayor, Mayor Berga, I think, actually tracked down for us today and clarified. But I think it's important to note that as part of that, he noted that this requirement should not be an obstacle to returning to in-person meetings. So that's, that's kind of where that piece is. On the scheduling side, and this was heavily drawn from kind of Joanne's work, the first piece is that it is able, as we call it a resource on the city councillor, council, excuse me, city calendar, it is able to be reserved. So it's not something where we're going to have to be calling people up and saying, is this room available? Is it not? To look and see, is the Harbor Master room available? Yes or no? And as such, it's currently blocked out for ONA as well as PND on the first and third Mondays and Wednesdays, respectively. And then the third piece is there was some potential conflict in meetings, but per the administration and Mayor Berga, the, if the, you know, vote is taken and approved tonight, the space will be reserved for PNF on the first and third Thursdays. So essentially, the, the space is able to be kind of reserved in perpetuity, you know, week to week. There's not going to be kind of a shuffle every week where we're trying to figure out, can we actually have it there or not? It will kind of just be reserved on an ongoing basis on the first and third Mondays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays for those specific subcommittees. On the technology side, so as I noted in the email, so all of your city provided Chromebooks, I've created basically a segregated city council-only, very special, reserved Wi-Fi network for all of you. It will auto-connect when you're in range of it. So that is something, actually, that is kind of just a, something that I put together for you to use while you're in any city building, whether it's annex, whether you're at the city hall, whether you're at Harbor Master, DPW. So it's, it's broadcast from the majority, not every single one of our access points, because some of them are, I don't, just don't think you're going to the wastewater treatment plant. If you are, let me know, and I'll put it there, too. But in general, it will just auto-connect. You'll open your Chromebook and it'll kind of say, there's a new Wi-Fi, and you're joined to it. You don't have to worry about a password or anything like that. It is set up for you. It is unlimited bandwidth, and it is, you're the only devices on that particular Wi-Fi network. As in order to personal devices, if you prefer or want to use a personal device in that room, it would have to use the guest network, which is a little more restrained, because again, it's just an open network. You'll have to do a kind of little, I agree splash page. So I would suggest that you use your Chromebooks. There's no real reason not to. And it's, they're, you know, they're going to have the best kind of performance there. So the room, as I said, is equipped with a wide-angle camera, mic, speaker. And so as part of that, as I will show you kind of below, the kind of individual, the kind of talking head Hollywood squares kind of thing that we have now shouldn't really be necessary, especially for the subcommittees, that, that integrated camera, mic, speaker setup is able to capture all three people in a pretty tight angle. I will show you an actual screenshot of what it looks like, so that you can kind of see how close we can get and that the, the quality is, is quite good there. It'll also pick up, obviously, your voice, as well as broadcast, anyone who's speaking via telephone call or Zoom through the TV. So again, the individual laptop, you know, you can bring your Chromebooks, obviously, if you want to look at, if you had a packet to look at, or you want to be able to check something or look something at the website, those kind of, those kind of functions are, are a great use of your Chromebook. We shouldn't necessarily need to be running three simultaneous Zoom sessions plus the one that the clerk is running. So essentially, the session is going to be, as I said, a simple setup. It really only has two inputs for the clerk's laptop. So whoever, whether it's Joanne, or Grace, or Sherry from her office, it's a, it's kind of, you plug it in, and it, it kind of works, you know. And so noted on the end, so I know Tony had a question about this, that I will conduct a training session for both the subcommittee chairs, as well as clerk's office staff in advance of any meeting starting. So, you know, it's, it's not a real complex setup, but, but I want to also make sure that all of you are comfortable with the way that it would be set up, the way that it would function. On the technical side, I think that, again, I think that the, the clerks are actually pretty, pretty high level on the, on Zoom. And I don't think it's going to really present any real obstacle to learn how to plug two things into their laptops and click a couple buttons. So a couple of notes, these were some direct quotes that I pulled straight from the CMR 940 2910 for open meeting laws, first of which notes that a quorum of the body, so these are specifically related to remote, remote participation in meetings. First one being that a quorum of the body, including the chair, or in the chair's absence, person authorized to chair the meeting, shall be physically present at the meeting location. That meaning two of three, I would guess, I think that constitutes a quorum on your subcommittees. Two of three must be physically present at minimum for each meeting. So one, one person could be the lucky person to do it from home. But, you know, obviously, that's, that's not my call. That is, that is obviously a discussion that needs to happen, you know, in terms of anything that is going to be legally binding or, you know, regarding open meeting law. Should really, if you need to check on something, I'm just trying to distill the information into a single presentation that really needs to be run by, obviously, Council President, as well as General Counsel and Administration, just to make sure that those things are, be done correctly. Second one being, any member of a public body who wishes to participate remotely shall, as soon as reasonably possible prior to a meeting, notify the chair, or in the chair's absence, person chairing meeting if there's a desire to do so, and a reason for exact supporting his request. At the start of the meeting, the chair shall announce the name of any member who shall be participating remotely. This information shall also be recorded in the meeting minutes. All votes shall be by roll call, essentially. So I mean, similar to the way we're doing it now, if someone is remote, this is just some requirements. And one of the note is that, I think that the, the idea of, especially if city staff are attending the meetings, allow them to continue to attend remotely via the hybrid solution, so that, you know, whether we have someone needing to juggle multiple meetings, you know, they've got to go to, go to planning board right before, you know, PND or whatever it may be, they've, you know, they've got kind of back-to-back meetings rather than having to get in their car and fly around town to try to meet all of these in-person meetings. They could, you know, come in remotely. Obviously, the, the room would also accommodate if we wanted or needed to have, you know, a relatively small number of additional city staff. For example, if we wanted to just be in the room for budget talks, whatever may be, things that are, that sometimes may be facilitated by some kind of face-to-face pieces. Those are, have the capability in the room, but allows people to, obviously, also still attend remotely. One other question, I think, that got raised on the 11th, had to, was regarding to technology failures during the hybrid meeting. And this was, again, this is a direct quote from the email from our general counsel Suzanne Egan, which said, Attorney General's guidance on open meeting law states that, ensure the public body encounter technical problems while meeting remotely, the person chairing meeting may decide how to address the technical difficulties, but is encouraged wherever possible to suspend discussion where, while reasonable efforts are made to correct any problem that interferes with the remote participant's ability to hear or be heard. This lesson with that advice, in my opinion, if there are technical problems with Wi-Fi, then the meeting should be suspended, though the meeting can go back online. However, if there are short lags or bumps in the streaming, I don't think that requires suspending the meeting. And I think that in general, Zoom is a pretty stable platform. Again, we'd be using the city's internet connection, which is probably the fastest in the entire greater Gloucester area. And I don't really anticipate there being a actual connectivity issue. So, but it's good to kind of have the guidance there should something happen, because obviously, if we are on a system whereby we only have a single camera that's kind of capturing the meeting, we need to at least be aware of that should something happen, you know, someone kicks the plug out of the wall, or whatever it may be. It's, it's up on the top of the walls, and no one's going to make that call. But should something happen, the power goes out, you know, we have obviously some exigent circumstances, but not anything that should be a regular concern there, I don't think. So I will show you now two views. The first one of these is full room view, as I call it. So this is actually the, why this is about pulled back about as far as a camera goes. It can actually, the lens can go to the left on here a little bit to capture a couple more of the folks in the room. But, you know, obviously, you can see on my kind of puzzled look there, there's a little bit of space behind me, so it can, it can kind of tighten up that direction a little bit. So the nice thing is, is that also we can save kind of as camera angles, we can save two views. So the thought was that, you know, we might kind of start and end with this view, so that, again, people joining remotely can see, is there anyone in the room? What does the room look like? Who, who is kind of there? And then, again, with the kind of push of a button on the part of the clerks, it would change to a second view, which is a tighter view of this. So this is, you know, again, we can, we have the ability to zoom and pull back, but this was to kind of just give a, this is a screenshot from a video, too. So that's why it's got a little bit of blur in it. But, but we're having a really fun time there, as you can see. And it, it, you know, as you can see, it's pretty tight on the three of us. You know, you can, we're not, you know, it doesn't look like we're at the end of a hallway or anything like that. And I think, you know, we've got a reasonable amount of distance between us on the table. So, and then, again, with the, with the microphone setup we have, there's no issue really with hearing what's going on in the room, and, and that's something that we can kind of tweak as need be. So kind of for a recap, so in my opinion, the Harbor Master Conference Room is one of the few, few spaces that are currently available in the city, which, in which a small-scale, fully hybrid meeting could possibly occur, being that the subcommittees have only three members, and that the expected in-person attendance by the public is able to be accommodated by this space. There's nothing from an operational, technical perspective that prevents us from running these meetings in a fully hybrid fashion without unduly taxing the IT or clerk's departments in the very near future. So that's kind of the conclusion of what I had. I will, unless anyone is, would like to see any of the pictures, for example, again, I will stop the screen share so that we can not have a giant thing on the screen. Any, any requests to see the pictures or anything else in the presentation before I take it down?
All right. Seeing none, thank you so much, Ryan. That was really informative. So councilors, what I'd like to do is before I make motion, so we can discuss this, does anyone have any additional questions that were not answered? Councillor Nolan?
Ryan, I understand that by the keypad, we can enter and we can set times. So if we say six to eight for an ONA meeting, but we're done at seven, how does the door lock? And how do we address that?
So we can actually set it so that, you know, so as, as we've noted, there's going to have to be a custodian there. So we can have it set so that if it was to end early, we can make a manual override with the keypad. So we could say, you know, for example, it's going to be just unlocked, unlocked, you know, no keypad necessary from, again, six to nine, say, just to give us the header, so it don't get locked in or out. No one will get locked in. But, but again, you, you and, we have a short meeting at eight o'clock. We can have it just set as part of the procedure that, on the way out, the custodian punches in the code, and that overrides that time-based schedule and locks the door.
Excellent. So we're not going to be responsible for locking the door to early meeting. It'll be up to the custodian?
Yeah, I think that that would be a good function, because the custodian is probably going to be kind of, you know, doing some basic straightening, I would guess, at the end, to make sure it's kind of, you know, ready and in good shape for the next day. So.
But how will he know what the end is?
I guess we'll have to tell the custodian what, what the end of a meeting means, how, how, how you would know that, I guess, the adjournment of a meeting, you know, what the correct language is. And then.
So there will be a relationship between the council and the custodian to say, the meeting's wrapped up, it's 6:15, you're going to come lock up? Or do we have a way of locking up?
So I mean, you, you know, we, we could have it be so that you knew the code, and you could lock it up yourselves. But again, I think if I understand it right, this is not something that I am 100% certain on, because it's more the DPW side. I don't know whether the custodian will basically just be sitting there physically in the room the entire time, or whether they'll just be kind of there to show up at the conclusion and clean up and lock up. That's, that is a question.
So lock up and responsibility for a city building is still up in the air and not knowing what's going to happen?
I mean, I think, you know, I mean, I, I, again, I can't speak to what the DPW is going to do, but I think that, again, I think that really the, the lockup of the building should be a function of the custodian, not necessarily the council. And that's something that, again, as far as I know, I think that the custodian is going to be in the room.
Excellent. Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you, Ryan. Any other questions? Councillor O'Neill?
Yes, um, excuse me, I have a, I have two questions, but I also have a suggestion to the lockup of the building. If a meeting is scheduled from six to eight, why don't we, or you, set it so that it's open from six to 6:30, and then it will lock after 6:30? So give people a half an hour grace period, which is generous, I think. And.
Can't do that.
Can't do that? No?
Has to be open all time.
Oh, okay. Okay. Oh, all right.
That's why we can never open up, we can never close the big door at City Hall, no matter how rowdy it is in the hallway, because we've got to do a true open meeting.
Okay, so I have two questions. You mentioned that if a member of the public wants to speak at one of these committees, they have to notify the chair prior to the meeting. Why is that, that they can't, they can't just zoom in?
Oh, that, I don't think that's what, what we meant. So the, a member of the public can speak to the extent that the chair allows it in a meeting. So for example, Tracy, in, in PND, for example, we have public hearings for poll petitions. So that's a perfect example of where no one has to sign up for that. That just occurred the way it does. So if the person was in the room, they could speak. The member of the public in the room, great. And if they wanted to just call in, they are free to participate similarly. They wanted to just call in, um, they are free to participate similarly.
Okay. I I thought I heard him say prior to.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's a public body, which I think actually means the subcommittee. As in, elected by the public. So meaning if one of the people on the subcommittee would like to participate remotely, they need to let the chair.
Oh, okay, alright, thanks, yeah. Um, and so when there are technical difficulties, it was suggested by the Attorney General, right? To suspend the discussion?
Um, so if you go, can we go back to that slide, Ryan, so we can be very clear? Because I know that um, we took that right from the regs. Thank you. So if there are technical problems with the wifi, the meeting should be suspended until the committee can go back online. However, if there are short lags or bumps in the streaming, I don't think that requires suspending the meeting. So in other words, we 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 try to fix the problem.
Right, right. But the the first, you skipped the first sentence, the Attorney General's guidance on the open meeting law states that. Should the public body encounter technical problems? Okay, I'm I'm thinking the a person of the public, but if. If the public body encounters technical problems, the person chairing, okay, may decide, so that doesn't count if a um. If a constituent encounters problems.
Well, I mean, you've been.
Okay, never mind.
So you've been in, um, can we um, make that down for a second, because it's a, it's a really good question. So we've been in a meeting, for example, at P and D, where somebody that was trying to participate in a poll petition. Had a technical difficulty, remember, and we um, we allowed that person to actually call the chair. And we put that person on conference call, so we could hear the person, so we didn't, so we were able to accommodate that person. Um, because it was a poll petition, it was a public hearing, and that was really important, right, so that's. That's so, that's an example of kind of. We we thought a little bit out of the box, and that's okay, based on the open meeting law requirements for technical.
Alright, thank you.
Great, great questions, um, who else has questions, uh, Council Worthley? Council Worthley, you are muted.
I'm sorry about that, it happens to everybody, I guess, right? Thank you, Council Gilman and Joanne Cinos for your work in this, and Ryan, excellent work. Um, if the council were to say yes to this today, uh, this is actually a question, I think, for Joanne. When is the earliest in terms of meetings that have already been advertised for public hearing, a public meeting? I think O and A meets on Monday, October thirty first, I know that because Sean's asked me to fill in. Um, and I just want to be sure we, like, when will be the first meeting that we could have that would advertise?
I can, I can, go ahead, Joanne, you can answer that.
Okay, so the first meeting booked in the Harvard Masters Room, if this goes forward, is November fourteenth for O and A. So the sixteenth for P and D and the seventeenth for uh, B and F.
Okay. Thank you.
Who else has questions that haven't been answered? Um, Counsel Gross. And then back to Counselor O'Neil.
Okay, so um, a couple of things, do we need, um, Ryan? Probably would be a good idea if the vice chair is also got the same training.
Sure, I mean, I would, I would actually ensure, I mean, it's, you know, nine people, we can accommodate, I would encourage everybody to try to make the training, I don't think it would be. A waste of time for anyone, and.
Right.
As I mentioned, I don't think we need to do a full on dry run by any means, I think that we can just. Just be nice to be in the room, open your Chromebooks, make sure that you can connect, make sure that while I'm standing there, if I need to diagnose something or help you, then. You know, or even your personal device, if you want to say, how do I connect to the guest wifi? I'm standing right there, and I will be glad to help you, so I don't think it would be a waste of time to have as many as of the uh. Counselors who would like and are able to.
Yeah, um, yeah, because that, and and that would be at the Harvard Masters Office, and would would the training include uh, the TV setup? And the voice and all that with the remote that's required for that and stuff?
Yeah, yeah, so.
In case, you know, the city, one of the city staff has to be, you know, um. On Thursday night, they have to be up at at City Hall, um, there's something that's going on, so they're coming in remotely, so it'd be good to have have all that stuff. Um, I know when we held the ARPA meetings down there, we actually did a little wider angle lens, but it was pretty good. Um, and that was where I was having trouble with the guests. Um, getting on, but if you're having us directly, then you're right, it it, I'm glad you clarified the. The Chromebook issue that I've had, and I think Jeff's had, and maybe Scott's had with Comcast routers, um. And so that's not an issue there, so the Chromebook should work fine, plus we're not on Zoom. So and that's, it was like a Chromebook Zoom router issue, so. Um, so that's all really, that's all good news, so, um, and when you, when you did the setup and breakdown, did you do all the tables and chairs?
Um, no, we just, we just moved, I think, with two of them over to that area.
Because we probably have to clear the whole deck and set chairs up for, you know, an intended audience.
Well, can I just comment on that, so the, so the. The venue was all set up when we walked in, it was kind of stadium seating with rows and like four chairs per row. And that was how it was set up, so we were looking at that as the base way that. The Harbor Master likes the room set up, so the only thing that we did in our forty three second setup. Was we took two of the the tables and three of the chairs at the front of the room. Directly across from the camera, and we just rolled them in place. And everything else would stay the same, and that way we we maintain it back to the same. Look that we received it in, in a really short amount of time. Now, if if for some reason, um, we get in there and and TJ has it set up in a different way, then. Um, we'd have to do some setup, but it's extraordinarily easy, because all the tape, you've been in there a million times, Tony. Um, so all the tables and chairs all have wheels on them, and they're really lightweight and extraordinarily easy to maneuver.
I think also with the additional info that we're going to have to have a custodian there, whether, you know. Either way, if we say, hey, these tables are kind of in the way, it'd be nice to just have rows of chairs, that's a great thing for the custodian to do in the fifteen minutes.
Yeah, and and um. I know when we opened the door with the keypad, it automatically locked, but you're talking about the timer would then hold it open for a set amount of time.
Yep.
Um, so yeah, so that's a little different than if we just opened it and went in, we always had to put like a rock in the door or something to keep it, keep it open and. Gets a little chilly with that big crack there, if it.
Yeah, we'll allow you to close the door in the winter.
Yeah, yeah, that that would be a good, good thing to be able to close the door, so the custodian will be, um, you know, it's a consideration, um. It's going to add, you know, cost to this whole venture, but it's um, not an insurmountable um, consideration. Okay, thanks.
I'd like to just elaborate on Tony's um, question too about the training, I think it would be really a great idea when we plan it. That if any counselor has any um. Desires to to learn something about Zoom, for example, how to screen share. We could incorporate that very easily into the training session if we're all there. To um, to just learn as much as we can, it will only take three or four minutes, and. Another comment that I would have is that we should get these procedures down in writing, so we're very clear. What the steps are that we should take, I think it doesn't hurt for us all to know those steps, so we can all kind of back each other up. Um, if that makes sense, so um, Counsel O'Neil, you had your hand raised.
Yes, thank you, um. Would this be available for the other subcommittees, because I'm looking, I know the um. Cost of Fisheries Commission had a meeting, I could not attend. And it's not on Zoom, so I don't, I, there's no recording of it. And I know the Committee for the Arts, I'd like to be able to, I I can't go to every single meeting. So if they're recorded. Then I could go back the next day or the over the weekend. That's, so I can, you know, study up on the Committee for the Arts or the Fisheries Commission or whatever. Committee, so would this Harbor Masters Room and the Zoom capabilities be available? For the other subcommittees and boards and commissions?
So I'd like to ask our CIO Jill Cahill, if you could just explain, Jill, how um, you've um, authorized the regulatory boards to make their decisions? Just to answer Counsel O'Neil's question.
So it's actually, thank you, Madam Chair, um, the, we've authorized the non regulatory boards. So that includes things like the Fisheries Commission, the Committee for the Arts. Um, to determine whether they would like to meet in person, traditional in person, or continue on Zoom. Um, because that was the feedback we were getting, we only had, we have limited space that's able to do the recording. Um, and that really right now is the Harbor Master Room, so no, we're not able to service every single board that way. Fisheries Commission is a really good example of, they never met on Zoom, their team wasn't, um, their commission members weren't. Weren't tech savvy and just didn't feel comfortable with it, so they went back in person. But we are, as part of that larger technology project, um, trying, and and Ryan can speak more of the technology, of course, but. Trying to bring the Harbor Master Room. The KDA Small Conference Room, which is really tough, because it's really small. Uh, the Council Conference Room up to a kind of a plug in place that we can record all meetings, but that's. Um, there's some technology that's involved in that, and Zoom is is helping and making it better, um, so. Jill, I think. So really, right now, because there's, I, we have a single border commission um, in a location that is able to record, um, but we're making progress in that direction. Uh, and and like I said, so we have updated every single one of the webpages, so if you want to know how a border commission is meeting. Um, it's on their webpages, whether they're meeting in person or they're continuing on Zoom, and obviously, minutes are still required. For anybody who's meeting in person, which it's just to make sure everybody's clear. Um, the minutes are the official record of a meeting, not the recording, so. Um, we'll continue to record as many meetings as we can, um, like I said, Ryan's working towards a pu- a plug and play option to make every meeting recorded, but we are not there yet. For non regulatory boards.
Thank you, Jill, Tracy, does that answer your question? Go ahead.
That that answers that question, but so this might be a silly question, but, um. There's. I don't know how to ask it, so I'll just refrain, nevermind.
Counsel, you can always follow up, give me a call tomorrow.
I think it would be for Ryan, there's no way that, like, say, three people on a, on. The Fisheries Commission, or however many people are on that board, can't just sit in a room. On Zoom on their computers and allow people to talk, because I can do that from my business. I can have Zoom conference with people, so I don't understand why. Three people are also, I don't know how many people's on the Fisheries Commission, or how many people are on the Committee for the Arts, but those. People that are on the board, why they can't meet together at the Harbor Masters Office. With their own computers and have people zoom in, record it on Zoom and have people zoom in. Is that, am I, is that oversimplifying things?
No, but it's it's a good question, but it's a licensing issue, I'll let either Jill or Ryan um, take that, so.
I can speak to it a little bit, I mean, just from the kind of technical side, I mean, it it it. The, it goes back to, I think, the issue actually of staff time and staff input on a Zoom meeting, so I mean, right now. For all of the boards and commissions and committees, you know, wherever they're meeting, whether they're meeting there, whether they're meeting somewhere else. To to allow them to kind of meet and record the meeting, then they have to be under the city's Zoom account, because the recording, think of a giant amount of space, but the city is something that the city retains in its budget. To kind of store all those recordings and then serve them to the website, so you can easily click on them and watch them the next day. Um, but it would require, again, a staff member from the city to uh, set up. Schedule and then start the Zoom meeting as well as end the Zoom meeting at some point, so it. It's it's something that, you know, it's a, goes back to some of the earlier discussions that we've had about the, you know, we have a lot of boards and. Committees and commissions, and um, especially for the non regulatory ones, it's a real. Um, it becomes a very substantial burden on city staff, especially because the question is really who is going to do all that work? Um, you know, that goes, it may seem like it's not that much, but um, you know, the the setup, the breakdown, the, you know, it's the same, it's the same set of. You know, staff burden, whether it's custodial, you know, all those pieces all go into any board commission meeting in the Harvard Master.
So not just any board member can do the setup and whatnot?
No.
It has to be a city, has to be like the city clerk's office?
Or just one of them, so yeah, so um, Counsel, we've been working through this, obviously, since twenty twenty. Um, James and then his successor Ryan worked really hard, we've tried to train. Um, chairs and vice chairs of boards and committees and commissions to start their own meetings, to set up their own meetings, and some have been super successful.
Jill, you froze up.
And some have not, so not only work depending on and who, I'm sorry, did I go, I'm having an unstable internet connection.
Some have been successful, and then you cut out, so if you could.
And some have, and some have not, and some are just plain not willing to, so these are all volunteers, so we. You know, it's it's not fair to also put on to the volunteers. Um, the additional burden of, okay, now you have to set up the the meeting and we have to license you, and so. In order to try to find that happy medium, um, that's why with the non regulatory boards. We've given them that option, there are many boards that did not meet all through COVID, again, Fisheries is the perfect example, because they were not comfortable with the technology, so. Um, I think it's really important to meet our volunteers where they're at, understand what the staff resources are involved. Um, and be as transparent with the public as possible, which is why we're updating. Uh, the website on a regular basis, uh, that we've been through, we've done a couple releases on how boards and commissions are meeting. And why we've also asked our um, regulatory boards to stay on Zoom until we can deliver a hy- a true hybrids uh, solution, because. Um, because we've seen such increased participation via Zoom, and we have the recording option, so until we can deliver on. A true hybrid situation, we've asked those boards that get kind of the most attention to stay that way, and there's no. I mean, as someone who's been as part of this since twenty twenty, there's no one size fits all, every board and commission, every volunteer, every staff, comdev has eighteen of them. Um, eighteen boards and commissions, you know, so they carry a heavy burden that way, so there's no one size fits all, so we're really trying to meet. Our volunteers and our staff and the public in the middle.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Okay, if there are no more questions, uh, Counsel Grow. Go ahead, you have the floor.
I would love to see us record every meeting, I think that's been terrific, especially for people to go back and see the nuance of what's being talked about. But at the very least, uh, can we request the administration reiterate the importance to our various boards and commissions of timely minutes? And thorough minutes, um, there are a lot of, and I don't know, I can't speak to any specific one, but. I noticed that going through some of the meetings of of some commissions, that the the reporting is very spotty, if if it's there at all. And I think that it's really important that we have uh, an accurate and and coherent record of those meetings. Uh, we're getting a little spoiled with being be be all being recorded, you know, it's awesome, but uh. But as you said, the the real record is the is the written record, and if we don't have stuff in a timely manner. And in a thorough, understandable manner, then it's not serving its purpose.
Um, Counsel Gross.
Yeah, just to uh, comment on on Jason's point there, there's two things, the the recorded record is not. Does not um, suffice for minutes, that needs to be known, that there, these, everybody still needs to keep minutes. But one of the problems with all these smaller boards is they don't have a recording secretaries. It's all on the head of either, you know, it's on the head of a volunteer, either the chair or an appointed, you know, scribe. That, um, so, you know, it it gets a little more difficult. Um, for them, so we need to be understanding about those things and and think about how we can uh, possibly. Uh, facilitate some some help in that direction. Uh, because it is, it is a big burden on on the the committees themselves to have to do that.
Yeah, counselors, can we, I I mean, I I love this conversation, but I'm thinking we're getting a little bit off. Track right now in terms of what we're here to vote on tonight, so maybe at a later date, we could put this on the agenda, um. With our CIO to kind of. Hone in on some of these questions, if that's without objection. Anyone else have a question on these rooms at this point in time, this room? Okay, I'm seeing none, um, I'd like to move to adopt full. Hybrid standing committee meetings to occur in the Harbor Masters Conference Room, beginning on the third week in November, and I so move.
Okay.
Hmm, I think it was Counsel Memard. Okay, okay. Um, Counsel Memard, um, seconded it. Is there a discussion, Counselors? Um, Counsel Worthley.
Firstly, I'd like to ask if you'd accept a friendly amendment to put the address of the Harbor Masters Office in the event the Harbor Master moves and someone says we're in the wrong place. Just to cross our Ts and dot our Is, that's 19 Harbor Loop, Building Number Two. Would you accept a friendly amendment?
Counsel Worthley would like to amend the motion to include the address of, say it again?
It's 19 Harbor Loop.
Okay, I'll second that.
Well, if you and Scott say okay, then that could be a friendly amendment, which, so.
No, we need, we need to do the right thing. So, um, let's, let's discuss that. Any discussion on the amendment?
We've just spent $2 million fixing the place up. I hope we, I hope it stays for a while.
Okay, we're gonna do, um, a roll call on the amendment. Um, Gilman, yes? Gross?
Yes.
Grow?
Yes.
Majota?
Yes.
Thank you, Frank. Um, Memhard?
Yes.
Counsel Nolan?
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
Counsel O'Neil?
Yes.
Counsel Worthley?
Yes.
Back to the main motion with the address. Further discussion on the main motion. Go ahead, uh, Counsel Grow and then Counsel Worthley.
Um, as, as most of you know, I've, I've been resistant to leaving my house for any circumstances, um, except the most dire of, of necessities. Uh, but I think it seems like that, uh, Ryan has, has managed to uh, take care of any concerns I have about being able to, to host a, a properly, uh, coordinated, uh, um, hybrid meeting. So I'm, I'm gonna be in favor of this moving forward. Um, I'm happy to continue to have the main, um, city council meetings being remote until we get that sorted out for City Hall. But I think this is a good start, and I'm, I'm happy to, to support it.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Worthley.
Yes, thank you to everyone involved, specifically Ryan, for preempting and thinking about all the possible scenarios and, and really leading on this. We appreciate you. Um, I second, uh, Counsel O'Neil's comments about trying to get other boards, but that's not really for us today. I think us leading is the best way to encourage other boards and commissions to also do this sort of thing. Um, I say to my kids all the time, the enemy of greatness is good enough and perfection. This is gonna have a few hiccups. Naturally, there'll be something that happens that we need to adjust and grow, but we only grow from the things we go through. And I think it's time that we say, kids are back in school, we can't use COVID as an excuse. We've had remarkable participation from Zoom. We have a location to do in-person meetings where the public can come in person or Zoom in. I can't see any reason why we wouldn't do this as soon as possible, so I will be voting yes and hope that my colleague Sue as well.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else like to speak in this discussion? Um, so, um, I would just like to comment and let you know how much I do appreciate Ryan and all of the work that he's done. And I think we can be leaders in this. This is a true hybrid model where we're bringing members of the public into this beautiful room that we have, as well as being able to bring in people that want to connect in from home. So I think that this is the best of the best, and I'm really excited about it, and I hope that, um, we vote affirmatively. So if no one else wants to speak, um, let's do a roll call vote. Uh, Gilman, yes? Gross?
Yes.
Grow?
Yes.
Majota?
Yes.
Counsel Memard?
Yes.
Counsel Nolan?
Absolutely.
Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
Counsel O'Neil?
Yes.
Counsel Worthley?
Yes.
The yeses have it. Nine in favor, zero opposed. Um, Counsel Grow has his hand raised.
Can we discuss the, uh, espresso machine?
I'm gonna bring you espresso the first night, and I'll bring you snacks as well, so thank you. Yeses have it, nine in favor, zero opposed. Thank you so much, Counselors. Appreciate it.
We're not needed at ONA. We have a live and vibrant meeting.
Little competition between our standing committees, huh? Um, next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Sure. Next order of business is the confirmation of new appointments. The Licensing Board, Ted Costa, term to expire 5/31/26.
I'll turn control of the meeting over to our ONA Chair and Vice Chair, Counsel Nolan.
How you doing tonight? So tonight, we have the Licensing Board, Ted Costa, term to expire 5/31/26. Ted, how are you doing tonight?
Excellent.
Excellent. Um, the floor is yours. If you want to talk a little bit about yourself, I mean, we all pretty much know you and respect you. Uh, but if you want a few minutes to, uh, have some things to say, we'd love to hear from you.
No, I think most of you know, uh, know who I am and, and where I come from. I did the jobs that you guys are all up there doing for, uh, sometime quite a long, long time ago. I'm retired now, have some free time on my hands, so, uh, I think I can, uh, and, uh, serve on this, uh, committee without any, uh, any hesitation or reservations whatsoever.
Excellent. Thank you, Ted. Is there any questions or comments from the Council for Ted? All right, here and none?
Sorry, do. Come in.
Counsel Worthley.
Thank you. Ted, thank you for volunteering. Um, I sat in on the Ordinance Administration Committee meeting where, I don't know if you did, or if Sean had listed sort of credentials, and you didn't remember to tell everyone you'd served in the City Council for four terms? Three terms? I can't remember. Um, I just want to thank you for that service and remind everyone that he's done that. Um, this committee, if I understand correctly, has to have a Democrat on and a Republican. Is that correct, Sean?
Yes, it is. Uh, Democrat, one Democrat, one Republican by state ordinances.
Okay. Which position are we changing out or, or, is that Ted, will Ted be filling? Not to get into national politics, but I never understood why we need those two, uh, parties.
Counsel Gross has his hand raised. Go ahead, Counsel, you're on mute. Okay, ahead.
This was Licensing Board. Well, this is Licensing Board, right?
That is correct.
That's not Elections Board.
Uh, Licensing Board is.
Oh, it does also?
Yes.
Uh, wow.
Doesn't really, makes sense why, right, Counsel? But could you share with us which one Ted will be filling and not, or who's leaving? Explain, help me understand that one. I appreciate it.
Um, I believe that would be up to Ted to answer, um.
Look, Counselor, if I could, there are three, uh, you're right, Counsel Worthley. There's an independent, a Democrat, and a Republican. The independent, John Orlando, has resigned. I'd be f- filling his spot as an independent.
Okay, thank you for sharing that. I have no questions about Ted's character, his ability and his willingness to serve. We're very lucky to have you, Ted. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Counsel Worthley. Um, yeah, without any further ado, I'd like to read the motion. On a motion by Counsel O'Hara, seconded by City Council Majority of the Ordinance and Administration Committee, voted by roll call, three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend the point, Ted Costa, to the Licensing Board, term to expire 5/31/26, and I so move, and thank you, Ted.
Second.
Motion's made by Counsel Nolan. It was seconded by Counsel Worthley. Um, is there further discussion, Counselors? Seeing none, roll call vote. Counsel Gilman, yes? Counsel Gross?
Yes, and thank you, Ted.
Counsel Grow?
Yes, and thank you.
Counsel Majota?
Absolutely, and thank you, Ted.
Counsel Memhard?
Yes, thanks, Ted.
Counsel Nolan?
Absolutely, and thank you, Ted.
Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
Counsel O'Neil?
Yes.
Counsel Worthley?
Yes, thank you.
Yeses have it. Nine in favor, zero opposed. Thank you so much, Ted, for all you do. Appreciate it. Um, next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Is the consent agenda?
Um, Counselors, would anyone like to pull any matter off the consent agenda? Counsel Worthley?
Yes, I'd like to take Counsel Order Number Three, which was for me, amending Gloucester zoning code section 5.23 off the agenda, and we'll discuss why momentarily.
Okay, anyone else like to remove anything from the consent agenda? Uh, Counsel Majota?
Uh, yes. I'm just, okay, I'm just trying to read, okay. Uh, I would like to take off the Counsel Order, uh, with, uh, myself and Worthley. CAC number 2022-029, request the Traffic Commission review options at the intersection of Centennial and Washington Street to ease traffic flow and to improve pedestrian safety.
Okay, thank you. And I would like to take off standing committee meeting minutes, ONA of October 17th, 2022. Um, so why don't we go back and approve the consent agenda as amended right now, and then we'll individually go through the rest. Um, so, um, this is to approve the consent agenda without the items that were just listed. Uh, Counsel Gilman, yes? Oh, wait. I'm, I, we don't have a second. So I move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Sorry, then.
Um, seconded made, um, by Counsel Grow. Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross?
Yes.
Counsel Grow?
Yes.
Counsel Majota?
Yes.
Counsel Memhard?
Yes.
Counsel Nolan?
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
Counsel O'Neil?
Yes.
Counsel Worthley?
Yes.
The yeses have it. Nine in favor, zero opposed. Now let's go over the matters that were removed. Um, Counsel Worthley, you started, so, um, why don't you explain City Council 2022-030, Worthley, amend GZO, section 5.23, residential land-based wind energy conversion facilities, section 5.23.3, special permit requirements subsection G, compliance with State Building Code. You have the floor.
Thank you. The reason why I pulled it off the consent agenda is, the, the goal of this in general is to look at potentially regulating reporting from wind turbines in terms of safety. But I make mistakes, believe it or not, and I put in a request to amend the residential uh, turbines, and I meant commercial. And so instead of trying to amend it here, I'm gonna work with the Clerk's Office to reintroduce that at a future meeting with the hopes that we can refer it to the Planning and Development Committee.
Okay, so without objection? Um, you'd like to withdraw this?
That's correct. Thank you.
Okay. And I don't see any objections, so, um, so that's the disposition of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Counsel Majota, you, um, had removed, uh, City Council 2022-029. Worthley Majota, request the Traffic Commission review options at the intersection of Centennial Lab and Washington Street to ease traffic flow and improve pedestrian safety, and that was to be referred to the Traffic Commission. You have the floor, Counsel Majota.
Yes, I removed it. Um, I put a similar, uh, very similar request to the Mayor's Office a week prior. Um, so I'm ju- I wanna follow with the Mayor's Office and see what can be done, and then if that leads to going through ONA to the Traffic, Traffic Commission, um, I wanna go with that route. So the request to the Mayor's Office has been in for that particular intersection.
Okay, so you're requesting that that be removed?
Um, yes, because I request, I already put a request to the Mayor's Office about that topic. So I would like it removed.
Okay, um, without objection, Counsel Worthley?
Could I just make a comment? Uh, at first, I apologize, Counsel Majota, did call me today, left me a message, and I missed it. My error. Um, when I read the request to the Mayor, I saw something about lighting around a crosswalk. Very specific to that, not a more comprehensive review, so that's why I introduced this. Um, so I don't, we don't need a debate, we can withdraw it, and we introduce it later if that makes sense. I just, I was looking for something a little bit more than just a crosswalk personally. So.
Okay, so without objection, um, you're willing to withdraw this?
For now, yes. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And the reason why I withdrew the minutes to the ONA meeting was that I would like to remove to amend, um, by deleting motion and adding committee recommendation, just in the header um, of the introduction of Ted Costa in the Licensing Board, term to be expired May 31st, 2026. So it's just a Scribner, not a Scribner's error, but it's just an error of title. Um, so, um, do I have a second on that amendment? Okay, um, amendment made by Gilman, seconded by Counsel Grow. Further discussion, Counselors? Seeing none, um, roll call vote. Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross?
Yes.
Counsel Grow?
Yep.
Counsel Majota?
Yes.
Counsel Memhard?
Yes.
Counsel Nolan?
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
Counsel O'Neil?
Yes.
And Counsel Worthley?
Yes.
Motion passes. Nine in favor, zero opposed. Thank you. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
I just want to mention there is no unanimous consent, um, calendar, and so, um, I forgot to take that off the template. Okay, so the next item is the Standing Committee Reports, the Budget and Finance Meeting of October 20th.
Great, and I'll turn the meeting, um, control over to Counsel Memhard, who chairs BNF. Counsel Memhard, thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Uh, we have a couple of items for your consideration. Uh, the first, I'm gonna ask your, uh, consideration towards compiling the four memorandums from our DPW to pay fiscal year 2022 invoices with fiscal year 2023 funds in the interest of time. And, uh, our city auditor Kenny Costa doesn't have a problem with that unless someone has a, uh, a, a particular question on these, that I, I would make a motion that these four, uh, payments of last year invoices with current year funds be approved.
I can.
Um, motions made by Counsel Memhard and seconded by, I didn't, I wasn't looking when you made that, Counsel Grow. Do you, can you, can you briefly summarize what the four are, Counsel Memhard, and then we will vote them?
The three of them are quite mo- minor dollar amounts for contracts that came in late, and the fourth one relates to, uh, refrigeration services by a small independent contractor at the Dorothy Talbot Rink, uh, who does a great job, but, uh, he's a small shop, and historically, he, uh, gets, gets his paperwork late, and, uh, we ask, we'd like to continue working with him, so we, we are working with him to, uh, try and speed up his billing so that we are in our current cycle, but, uh, they're all fairly matter-of-fact and routine.
Okay, Ca- um, Counselors, are you comfortable with the summary as noted? Um, okay, so I'll, I'll set. So, um, let's do a roll call vote. Uh, Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross?
Yes.
Counsel Grow?
Yes.
Counsel Majota?
Yes.
Counsel Memhard?
Yes.
Counsel Nolan?
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
Counsel O'Neil?
Yes.
Counsel Worthley?
Yes.
Motion passes. Nine in favor, zero opposed. Uh, hold on a sec, Counsel Grow has his hand raised.
Quick question, uh, just going back, we did, we did second this as a, as a, uh, consent, uh, agenda vote, correct?
We did.
I just, I, I didn't hear it, so.
Thank you. So the, um, the yeses have it, nine in favor, zero opposed. Thank you.
And I would just like to follow up and comment. Thank you that, um, we did take these individually at Budget and Finance Committee meeting last Thursday. Uh, we went through them with Mark Cole, the assistant, one of the assistant directors. And if anybody has a particular question or concern on any single line item, uh, that covers it in some detail, that transcription, that Zoom recording.
Right, and the BNF meeting minutes were approved tonight, so you can go back and look at our City Council documents to see what they were specifically, if anyone's interested. Thank you, Counselor. Um, next order of business, Counsel Memhard. I believe you have one more, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, the second item I just want to highlight, uh, is simply a memorandum from the Harbor Master requesting our acceptance of court security grant, uh, in the amount of 200, $285,941. This is for information only. We've already approved the expenditure for the SAFE vote, and this represents a successful grant writing and, uh, obtaining offsetting funds that are already been, we're already authorized to accept for the purpose of Harbor Masters' new SAFE vote, S A F E vote, which, uh, we're very pleased to say may, may well be in the pipeline and to the, to the, to Gloucester Harbor, uh, sometime early next summer.
Great, thank you, Counsel.
Yeah, the third item from Budget and Finance was a request uh, from the Gloucester School Committee to have us approve, approve a school committee compensation increase from $5,000 to $5,500, or 10% from five thousand dollars to five thousand, five hundred dollars, or ten percent effective January first, two thousand and twenty-four, which is in the next election cycle, as required under Mass General Law, chapter seventy-one, paragraph fifty-two, and I saw move.
Second.
Motions made by Council Memard, seconded by Council Worthy. Is there a discussion or narrative, Council Memard?
This was a unanimous vote and request from the Gloucester School Committee, who did substantial research about pay rates and competitive school committees, reviewing other communities and acknowledging the fact that of the various elected officials of the school committee has been the longest without any kind of offsetting increase, and the school committee respectfully requests that we approve this budget, which is this increase, which is part of their budget. And again, it's effective January of two thousand and twenty-four, which would be the next elected cycle.
Great, and I just want to recognize the chair of the school committee, Kathy Clancy, is on the on the call, in case there are any questions. Seeing none, further discussion? Councilors, Council Worthy, and then Council Nolan.
Thank you. I raised this at Budget and Finance. It didn't make it into the minutes, and I'm hoping that just this can be clear. I'm supporting this. I had suggested that the school committee members current and going forward deserve more than this, but it's not our, we don't have the ability to change their budget, so it's really up to them to make this decision. But I don't think councilors presently or prior councilors realize how much work goes into being a school committee member. It's actually, in some cases, more than what we do, which is still a lot. Offering them five hundred dollars more, nobody does this to make money. But they give up a lot of time, a lot of personal sacrifices. We are very indebted to the school committee members, prior to the school committee members, current ones, and I'll be supporting this because they're asking for it, and if they'd asked for more, I'd be supporting more. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Council Grow, oh no, I'm sorry, Council Nolan, I think you had your hand raised, and then Council Grow. Council Nolan.
Jeff kind of stole my thunder on that. It's five hundred dollars, but they work hard. They work real hard, and it's out of their budget. It's up to them. This is a very modest amount to ask for for what they do. I would have supported a lot more if they could find it in their budget. They work very hard for an important part of our community, and I thank them every day for their services, and I will be supporting this.
Thank you, counselor. Council Grow.
So he said what he said. I don't think people really understand how much the school committee has to know and and has to has to keep in mind when they when they go through the the process of of working on educational policy, and I really admire the amount of work that they have to do. In some ways, I regard I regard their job in in some ways a lot more difficult than ours because of the technicality and the and the educational reform issues that they have to keep in mind and understand. I really do appreciate everything they do. I do agree that they should probably be paid more than what they are. It takes in a tremendous amount of time outside of the meetings that they attend, and they do a lot of issues and involve regarding negotiations and contracts and and, you know, the building of the school is no, 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 no small task at hand. So I really do appreciate everything they do. I do think they deserve more money. I do also do understand that they're reluctant to move too high in that in that compensation level, and I'm happy to give them some additional compensation that they're comfortable with.
Thank you, counselor. Any further discussion, councilors? Council Gross.
Yeah, I I know firsthand at how much work they do, and and, you know, Jason, you hit on a good point on negotiations. That's one of the toughest pieces of the job, but also they have to know all the educational programs and and they have to be, you know, up on on the state laws and the state mandates and have to be there. They're somewhat slaves to 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 all of that, and it's it can be a very difficult position to be in. I, you know, in discussions with school committee members, you know, I I told them that I felt they, you know, deserved more, but this is what they decided they they wanted to put forward, and we have to respect that. You know, they're they're an autonomous body that's elected by the by the citizens of Gloucester, and this is what they unanimously had, you know, lengthy discussions over this and came up with this this number, and and I'm glad that we can give them something. This is kind of a an odd thing that we have to grant them permission to use money in their own budget, but that's a that's a state law that requires city councils to be able to allow school committees to have, under our form of government, school committees to have compensation. So we are, we're the ones who hold the purse again on them, so I'm glad that they put something forward. And, you know, obviously, I'll be fully supporting this since I put moved this forward with the other former school committee member, Council President Gilman.
Thank you, counselor, and I just wanted to to send some kudos to Council Gross, who really took the lead in pulling this together and allowed me to co-sign with him as a former six-year member of the school committee. So thank you. So I think we've we've finished our discussion. So people are clear. I believe the motion was made by, let me just remember for a second, Council Memard, it was seconded by Council Worthy, if I'm not mistaken, correct? Okay, so roll call vote. Council Gilman, yes. Council Gross.
Yes.
Council Grow.
Yes.
Council Majota.
Yes.
Council Memard. Council Memard.
Yes.
Council Nolan. Council, thank you, Council Memard. Council Nolan.
Yes, and thank you to the higher school committee.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council O'Neill.
Yes.
Council Worthy.
With gratitude, yes.
So the yeses have it, nine in favor, zero opposed. Thank you, Kathy Clancy, for being on the call representing the school committee. Send, please send along to the rest of the committee that some of the accolades that you just heard from the from the councilors. So thank you for your hard work. Next order of business. Oh, I think we are still with Council Memard, if I'm not mistaken. So Council Memard, would you continue? Thank you.
Yeah, our our fourth and final item for your consideration tonight is a memorandum from the Director of Elder Services, Elise Sinagra, requesting our acceptance of donations in the total amount of eight hundred and five thousand, eight hundred and five dollars. Love to add some more decimals, but eight hundred and five dollars. And on a committee recommendation on a motion by myself, seconded by Council Worthy, Budget and Finance Committee voted by roll call, three in favor, zero opposed, recommend the city council accept cash donations under Mass General Law forty-four fifty-three A to support the council on aging in the total amount of eight hundred and five dollars from the following members and business partners within our community. And these include the West Gloucester Trinitarian Congregational Church and Nelbanian, Jerry Favolaro, Marilyn Grant, Susan Baranek, Judith Harris, Lynn Sosman, Linda Zager, Josephine Belante, and Connie Condon, for a total amount of eight hundred and five dollars, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Council Memard, seconded by Council Worthy. Is there a discussion, councilors? Seeing none. Oh, thank you, Council Memard. Roll call vote. Council Gilman, yes. Council Gross.
Yes.
Council Grow.
Yes.
Council Majota.
Yes.
Council Memard.
Yes.
Council Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara. Council O'Neill.
Yes.
Council Worthy.
Yes.
The yeses have it, nine in favor, zero opposed. Thank you, Council Memard. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Is the Orleans and Administration Standing Committee Report of October seventeenth.
Council Nolan.
There is no items under this heading tonight, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Is the Planning and Development Standing Committee Report of October nineteenth.
Also, no items of need to be discussed at the council level.
Thank you. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Is the first scheduled public hearing, Public Hearing two thousand and twenty-two dash zero two two seven, Loan Order twenty-two dash zero zero six, loan authorization in the amount of two point one five million dollars for the IT infrastructure.
I'd like to open the public hearing and ask a member of administration to explain this loan authorization.
I see Jill Cahill's first first up, so.
Well, I think everyone on the call knows. Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to introduce it, let everyone know that obviously the administration is very happy to support this initiative brought forward by our IT Director, Ryan Knowles. I wouldn't pretend to be able to explain it the way he can, so I will let him go into the details of it. But I think it benefits the city as a whole and really reflects the mayor's priority to make city business more efficient. So thank you, Ryan, for your work in this, and I hope you all will support this.
Great, thank you. So Ryan, you have the floor in the public hearing.
Great. So this, you know, so this loan order is is one that we, as a city, have a production data center that is located at the Gloucester High School. If you would ever like to come see it, I will gladly give you a tour. And it, so it is, it is what really houses the the all the compute, all the storage for all of the applications that we use across the entire city. It is a substantial investment that was put in place roughly seven years ago by my predecessor, James Pope, and as I kind of explained, the Budget and Finance, you know, we we as a city were were would I would consider to be, we were badly behind when he showed up, and the work that he did was, you know, really incredible in the amount of time that he did it. And so that was, you know, seven years ago, so I mean, it seems, maybe it seems challenging to accept, but if you even think about the speed of technology, the things that have changed in seven years have been substantial, and typically, the life cycle of an enterprise appliance, namely, our main server environment, all of our production storage, which is essentially the way we have it set up, is like a big hard drive and a big computer matched together there, and the life cycle of those is about seven years. So we are coming up on that. The storage that we have is going to go end of life in January, and the compute is going to go about ten months after that. So this, a big part of this order, loan request, appropriation order, is 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 designed for the replacement of those two pieces in particular, the compute and the storage, because those are things that we need to replace, and this is a, you know, a continuity continuation of, you know, the efficiency of our city, the efficiency of people being able to do their work, you know, we we are actually getting to the point now where we are hitting ceilings in terms of the resources that we have available. People say, I want to run this application here. I wish this other application would run faster, you know, and we're kind of telling them we're we're kind of at the limit, and there's really, it's it's a silly, it's a poor use of funds to pour a bunch of money into this to make it incrementally faster or incrementally more efficient, when in reality, we're looking at these appliances going end of life in January and then ten months later. So that's kind of one part of it. The second part of it is our network switching, which is like the transport of information across the city. So this is between all of our buildings, city and schools, I don't know. And one big piece of this is that in conjunction with Grant Harris from the school, from the Gloucester Public Schools, we've secured about half of the amount, about four hundred thousand, eight hundred thousand dollar purchase of switches from the federal government-informed category, our E-rate category two funding. So this was something that, you know, was important to me, was to show that, you know, I I am exhausting the the kind of the the various avenues for additional funding here, not just saying, I don't know, I need I need three-quarter million dollars for this, can I please have it, but saying this is an opportunity we have for me to offset some of this. And that's that's another part of this. A additional portion is designed around an integrated phone system, and this is something that I've kind of looked at since I I started here about two years ago. Currently, in the city, we have one phone system for about three quarters of the city, so basically, all of the city offices other than City Hall. We have one phone system for the Police Department. We have one phone system for City Hall. We have one phone system for the public schools. So what we end up doing is, I think, wasting a lot of money doing inbound and outbound calls so that I can call over to the school building so that I can call City Hall. If you think about the number of phone calls that go between City Hall and the Annex every day, every one of those costs money for an outbound and inbound call on both sides. So the the advantage that we have here is that the Sid, this school's main phone system is is end of life already. It's it's they've had it for about ten years, and it's kind of limping along. They needed a replacement, and so speaking of the grant, our current phone system for most of the city is has about two years left on it, but rather than kind of continuing to do this mix and match where we have all different phone systems, I said, this is our opportunity to say, let's get one phone system to use a rings of power reference, one system, one phone system to rule them all. One one phone system that we can internally dial on so that we can dial an extension, for example, to get to the schools, get an extension to go to City Hall, extension to fire police, all the buildings. So that is a substantial project, and it is one that is costly, but I think that one, the benefits of efficiency, the benefits of save savings, especially in the form of phone bills, because currently, we pay all the, for all those systems, we have to have separate phone circuits for every one of those systems, and a separate support agreement for every one of those systems. The the old ones at City Hall and Police Department in particular, there is one person that knows how to fix those when they break, the state of Massachusetts, and I thank I thank thank all the all the powers that be that that he is a healthy and, you know, sprightly man that is able to show up, but would love to kind of integrate these systems. Would love to kind of put them under one roof, say, one phone bill, one big source of port agreement, and also be able to just cut down on the unnecessary inbound-outbound calls. So that's that's kind of the those are the kind of big buckets that that these are placed under. I realize that this is a substantial amount of money. I realize that this is money that is, you know, not just money that's appearing out of thin air. This is money that I know that people who pay taxes here in Gloucester, which I'm one of them, you know, will fund, and I take them very seriously. I I take I take the the stewardship of those funds and the the use of those funds, the responsible use of those funds very seriously, and, you know, and have asked for what I need and no more, and what what we need as a city, I think, as an enterprise to move forward into the next ten years, seven to ten years.
Great, thank you, Ryan. Would anyone else like to speak in favor? Seeing none, would anyone, member of the public, like to speak in opposition? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, are there any correspondences or communications?
There are none.
Councilors, do you have any questions? Council O'Neill.
So I was looking at, hey, Ryan, thank you for for answering my question, hopefully, and for doing all this work. I have a I have a memo here from the Community Preservation Committee in December of two thousand and twenty, and it says one point seven million dollars is allocated for IT service upgrades. So back then, I mean, that's like two years ago almost. So should we be expecting like a bill this high like every two years to to keep up with technology? I mean, I don't, I I'm just.
I, so that was before my time. I don't know if Jill has any context on that, or John.
Our CFO, John Dunn. Welcome, John. Thank you.
Thank you.
John, could you turn your volume up a tad? We're having a hard time hearing you.
Well.
It's a little better.
I'm kind of in a in a bad place, but okay.
Now we can hear you when you when you sit like that. We can hear you well now. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. So there is support for, you know, things that are going to be going on in City Hall to do improvements, and some of that will come from many Preservation Act funds. This is a little bit different, so we're kind of moving forward on some things that we need to do now, as Ryan has explained. You know, it's mostly going to be communications within within City Hall and particularly the phone systems. So that's not what basically is going to be aimed for in in terms of. in, in terms of the Community Preservation Act funds, but, um, that will be coming forward in the future to do the entirety of the City Hall renovations.
I'm, I'm not following you. Um, the 1.7 million that was paid out in 2020, are we still borrowing against that or did they spend that or what was it used for? I mean, it's a lot of money. I'm just wondering.
Well.
What we got.
Counselor, nothing has been paid out yet. That is a commitment in the future.
Okay, and it's dated 2020 and we still haven't used it?
That was a commitment by the Community Preservation Committee to, you know, fund things that will happen in the future. There has been no money spent on that yet.
Okay, so would that go towards the 2.15 million? Or is that in addition to it?
No, that will primarily go to improvements to City Hall and primarily for, um, fire suppression.
Well, there's, there's a, um, there's a whole separate thing here for fire suppression. Um.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, it's 3.32.
Funding is designed, as John said, for, for data wiring improvements in City Hall, and that is the IT portion there. So, that is, that is kind of one-time capital expend, I mean, as, as is this, but, um, so, I mean, so, I mean, if, if your question is, are we going to expect a, you know, multimillion dollar loan request every couple of years for, for a bunch of IT stuff? The answer is no. Um, the, the, uh, in terms of this, be, this particular type of expenditure on, you know, the data center in particular, we're talking about, this is really a seven to 10-year investment. So, I mean, this.
Okay.
So. It's going to go.
Um, can, um, Counsel, can you hold on just a second? Is, is there another, um, Counsel that hasn't spoken yet that would like to, um, ask a question? And then we'll return to Counsel O'Neill. Uh, Counsel O'Hara, and then we'll go back to Counselor O'Neill.
Ryan, thank you very much for everything you do for the city. We, uh, we truly appreciate it. Uh, i- if this was approved tonight, Ryan, as far as the phone system, um, how long would it take to, to change out the system? When, when would we start seeing the return on investment? Thank you.
Sure. So, so the phone system, because of the size of the, uh, and the, you know, the size of the project and the amount of money, it would probably go out via an RFP, would probably get a proposal from a number of different vendors who would propose solutions. Um, and this would be something that we'd work on probably with Grant and I across the city and schools. It's going to be, um, kind of a solution for both of us. Um, so, you know, that process depending on the, um, you know, the creation of the RFP, which Grant and I have actually already kind of started drafting, um, in anticipation that we would, you know, be saying, okay, now let's start working on it, um, um, for exactly that reason, as you mentioned, uh, reasonable ROI on it. Um, they, you know, that, that process will take probably six weeks or so to put that together, get it out, get responses, evaluate them, make a decision. And then in terms of the installation, we will probably do it kind of, um, piece by piece. We'll probably do the easiest ones, which are the city and the existing kind of, um, school and city, more modernized phone systems. And then thereafter, because some of the pieces first, Police Department for, um, City Hall rely some on improved data wiring in those spaces. We'll have to do that first. So, we'll bring those on together. But I would look at it that I think it was a project that we can finish, um, within one calendar year. So, I think that we can, uh, you know, and I mean, even just compile, being able to, um, mash the, the primary school and the primary city phone circuits into a single circuit, even just doing that in the next six months would be a substantial, um, improvement.
Thank you. And I'm going to go back to Counsel O'Neill.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify, get this straight in my head. The 1.7 million is for City Hall and for, in IT infrastructure, basically, right? And the, this, this 2.15 is for other IT, like the networking and the integrated phone system. So, that has, this 2.15 has nothing really to do with the 1.7 and vice versa?
Um, I will let, I will let our CAO answer that and then I will ask, uh, John Dunn, our CFO, to continue. Um, unless you two want to change, who's going to?
No, that, I think I got it, but if John can correct me if I'm wrong, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, yeah, two separate projects. So, the 2.15, the 2.15 tonight is citywide. So, the switches are citywide, the phones are citywide. And the 1.7 for the, that CPC authorized, that is for the, is for City Hall specifically.
Okay, that was a good one.
And that hasn't, that project hasn't started yet, but I think in Ryan's memo and your packet, and Ryan, you're shaking your head, yes, I think I'm right. Um, you will see that we are going, not the CPC money, but, uh, we also got state money towards that project. And we will be accessing that to get going on the, the technology work to bring you guys back to City Hall for hybrid, true hybrid meetings. So, City Hall, as you can imagine, is a technology challenge in itself. Um, what you're voting on tonight is a citywide project, not speci- not specific to City Hall.
Got it, thank you.
Yep. Thank you, Jill. Um, John Dunn, our CFO, do you have anything to add to that?
Uh, yeah, just generally, um, the City Hall project is going to probably be five plus million dollars in its entirety. And, and this is a little piece of it that will come in this way to do some things that we need to do, um, right away. Uh, again, over the course of time, we're going to have to do a very large number of things with the City Hall, primarily, um, you know, going down and reconstituting various offices, but primarily, you know, bringing in fire suppression within City Hall. So, this is just a small little piece of it and we're able to do this now. And, and that will allow us to kind of function more efficiently, as Ryan mentioned. Um, and, you know, we're happy that, happy to do this little piece right now.
Thank you. Um, Counselors, any further questions before we close the public hearing? Seeing none, I'd like to close the public hearing and ask Counsel Memard for the committee report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, uh, Budget and Finance Committee went through this thoroughly and, uh, we spent quite a bit of time with Ryan and his discussion. And again, you're welcome to look at the, uh, Zoom recording of our budget meeting with, with Ryan. But in terms of the motion itself, on a motion by Counselor Memhard, seconded by Counselor Worthley, Budget and Finance Committee voted roll call three in favor, zero opposed. Recommend that the City Council approve the loan order as follows. Ordered that the City of Gloucester appropriates $2,150,000 to pay costs related to citywide improvements.
Settings.
Information, data, communications, equipment, including costs incidental or related thereto. To meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the mayor is authorized to borrow said amount under pursuant domestic law 44, section seven or section eight, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, the mayor and any other appropriate official of the city is authorized to apply for, to accept, to expend any grants or gifts that may be available to the city to pay costs of the projects. Any premium received by the city upon sale of bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium apply to the payment of costs of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with chapter 44, section 20 of the general laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount. And further ordered that the treasurer is authorized to file an application with the Municipal Finance Oversight Board to qualify under chapter 44A of the general laws, any and all of the bonds authorized by this order and to provide such information and to execute such documents as the Municipal Finance Oversight Board may require for these purposes and is a move.
Second. Motion is made by Counselor Memard and seconded by Counselor Worthley. Is there a discussion, Counselors? Counsel Worthley.
Yes, I supported this in BNF Budget and Finance Meeting and I'll be supporting it tonight. I, I think that, I, and thank you, Ryan, for all of your contributions and for specifically leading on this. Um, I think sometimes, and I appreciate your comments about being sensitive to taxpayers. This is an investment that helps taxpayers, the way I see it. And I consider IT part of our infrastructure, no different than the wastewater treatment plant, the water treatment plants, the pipes that are on ground and we always, so it kick the can forward and then fall behind and it costs us more later. And I think this is, as I said before, and some other things you've worked on, is real leadership to say, let's look at what we need to do now to prevent us from falling further behind as we are in technology. So, I want to thank you. I hope the council supports this and I look forward to our phones working and all the other things that need to go, uh, change. Um, so thank you again for tonight and for the, for putting this together.
Thank you, Counselor. Any further discussion, Counselors? Counsel Gross.
Yeah, just, um, to, to, um, you know, go off of what Counselor Worthley said was, you know, this administration needs to be, um, you know, admired for its, um, it's, it's looking forward and taking care of some of these situations that we're just, think about it. We've had this phone system that's been so archaic for decades, probably. And now finally it's being taken care of and I think that, um, that we really need to, to recognize that, you know, yes, we have to borrow the money to do it, but it's, in the long run, it pays dividends. So, I just wanted to, uh, to recognize that. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the roll. Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross?
Yes.
Counsel Grow?
Yes.
Counsel Majota?
Yes.
Counsel Memhard?
Yes.
Counsel Nolan?
Yes, thank you, Ryan.
Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
Counsel O'Neill?
Yes, and thank you very much, Ryan.
And Counsel Worthley?
Yes, thank you.
The yeses have it, nine in favor, zero opposed. Thank you. Next, next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Next order of business is the second public hearing, public hearing 2022 dash zero 28. Loan order 2022 dash zero zero seven, loan authorization in the amount of $29 million for the Sawyer Free Library Edition and renovation project.
Counsel Nolan has his hand raised. Counsel Nolan.
Um, may I request a three-minute before we get into the next, uh, public hearing?
Um, so we do need to vote the recess. Um, so we have a request for recess by Counsel Nolan. Is there a second?
Second.
Um, seconded by Counsel Worthley, um, a quick roll call for a three-minute break. Um, Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross?
Yes.
Counsel Grow?
Yes.
Counsel Majota?
Yes.
Counsel Memhard?
Yes.
Counsel Nolan?
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
Counsel O'Neill?
Yes.
Counsel Worthley?
Yes.
Three-minute recess. We'll be back at approximately eight forty-seven?
Seven, seven forty.
Seven, seven forty-seven.
Oh, I'm sa- I'm sorry, I'm an hour off. Thank you, Tracy. Seven forty-seven, thank you.
Welcome.
Okay, so we're coming back to our meeting of the 25th of October. And I will, uh, we're coming back from a five-minute recess and I'd like to ask Madam Clerk to reintroduce the next order of business, if you would. I know you already did that before our break, but let's just, um, reintroduce that. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
It's public hearing 2022 dash zero twenty-eight, loan order 2022 dash zero zero seven. Loan authorization, the amount of $29 million for the Sawyer Free Library Edition and renovation project.
Thank you. I'd like to open the public hearing and I would like to ask the applicants to begin the conversation and I believe we want to bring in Jenny Benedict, who's the Executive Director of the Sawyer Free Library. Um, so, um, we'll begin with, with, um, our CAO, Jill Cahill.
Thank you. So, um, so I just want to make sure, so myself, um, similar to be a, be a NF, um, unfortunately, the mayor couldn't be here tonight. He's on his way to an MMA meeting in Pittsfield, so I'll speak on behalf of the mayor. Uh, John Dunn is here, hopefully back from the break. And Jenny Benedict will speak on, uh, to kind of lead off the presentation for you all. So, it looks like Jenny's back. I think John's back. Um, my part's really short and I just wanted to make sure, um, I spoke on behalf of the mayor. Anyone who watched BNF or was at BNF, um, the mayor was there to specifically say that he supports this project. This project, uh, is it, is really truly a gift to the entire city. The library is the one place that everybody's always welcome, um, as a city hall, but it's, it, it offers a completely different resource, uh, to our city. And it's such an important part of our community. It plays so many different roles. And we are happy, um, that we as a city can help make this project possible. Um, I think it's important to know that, and John will talk more to this, but this is, this is the way to make this project possible. And we are really happy and on behalf of the mayor, proud to be a part of it and support it here tonight. So, John can walk you through some of the finance piece. Jenny can walk you through the project and, um, the fundraising and what they've done so far. And we also have Suzanne Egan on the call in case anybody has uh, questions related to that. So, thank you so much. And then, um, on behalf of Mayor Verga, we hope you'll support this loan order tonight. I'll hand it over to John.
Thank you, Jill. Um, John Dunn, our CFO, you have the floor.
Thank you very much.
John, can you speak, can you speak closer to the microphone again? I hate to be annoying, but we really want to hear you.
No, that, that's not a problem. Can you hear me now?
We can, thank you.
Right, thank you. Um, so this is a little bit complicated. We've talked about this before. Um, the, um, grant that is a big support of the project at nine-plus million dollars um, is from MBLC, National Board of Library Commissioners, and that grant runs directly to the city. So, the other issue here is that we had to kind of figure out how to issue debt as we move forward, because there's going to be issues with cash flow. So, the, the entire project came down to the city to be able to accept the grant from MBLC as well as to issue rolling debt as we move forward, um, on double, you know, uh, double tax dispensation. So, um, this is where we are. The proposal is that it's a $29 million loan order. Um, what we're going to do is put this loan order out, borrow money over the course of the construction, which is going to exceed the, you know, what we expect for, um, revenue coming in. Um, but at the end of the day, the idea would be that we're going to be rolling short-term notes at relatively low interest rates. Um, again, you know, doubled, you know, a- again, as the, the city issues, um, all of its debt and then rolling that forward and repaying that as both the grant comes in from the state, as well as the fundraising comes in from the fundraising at the library, foundation. So, we're, we're thinking, the plan is that at the end of this parade, um, which is probably going to be five or six or maybe even seven years, that at the end, the plan will be that the city will not have to, uh, invest any money in, you know, putting up a new library, which will be beneficial, hugely beneficial to the city. So, um, we're hopeful that this will all work out this way. Um, we have a plan. We've been talking about this for many years about how this will roll out. Um, and I think we're pretty much, um, in, um, in cohesion here after talking to many lawyers, um, that this will come together and that at the end of the day, um, the city will not have any liability for pushing this forward.
Thank you, John. Um, and, uh, I think the next person that would like to speak in favor is the Executive Director of the Library, um, Jenny Benedict.
So, can you hear me?
Loud and clear. Thank you, Jenny.
Okay, so I do, uh, have a presentation and if someone would allow me to share my screen, that would be great.
You should be able to share your screen, Jenny.
Okay, so, uh, yeah, I, my camera is not on, so it's not obvious that I am actually, uh, have been admitted to the meeting at this point.
You are, uh, you are a panelist.
Should I promote to a panelist, Joanne? Uh, she's on the panel, but.
Is she not a panelist? I, I brought her in, let's see.
She's still in the, as an attendee, Joanne. I think you need to promote her. She's still in the, as an attendee, Joanne. I think you need to promote her.
So, I don't value, you have the ability to promote her, because I do not.
I just promoted her.
Okay.
She's there as a panelist now.
Okay, hello. Good evening, Counsel. Thank you very much. So, I am going to now share my screen. Okay. Thank you there. Here we go. Okay. So, as John Dunn mentioned, the request before you this evening is to consider a $29 Million Loan to finance the Sawyer Free Library Renovation and Edition Project. And this loan order provides the authorization for the treasurer to borrow and issue bonds to carry out this project. You're all quite familiar with the project. In July, the library made a presentation that showed the many amenities that make the 2025 Sawyer Free Library a strategic investment for our community. Gloucester has a tremendous amount of pride in its public library. Generation after generations of Gloucester residents and folks across Cape Anne have come to know our library's legacy as a place of potential and possibility. So, with the public spaces and the technology and the resources and the assistance of our expert staff, the 2025 Sawyer Free Library will set in motion a more literate population, greater digital literacy, improved employment prospects, more informed decision-making, and a better connected society. At the BNF meeting, we reviewed the MBLC Public Library Construction Grant Program, which is largely what this opportunity is all about. So, the grant program has been in existence for 35 years and has funded more than 227 public library new construction and renovation projects across the Commonwealth. Just a little bit of a refresher on the history. In 2016, City Council voted to apply for, receive, and expend state funds to defray all or part of the cost of the design, construction, and equipping of the library project. In the following year, MBLC notified the city that the application for the project had been accepted into the program. And then this summer, after five years of being on the waitlist, MBLC finally notified us that they had approved the provisional grant award for Gloucester. So, at this time, it is a provisional grant award, because the city has to meet a number of requirements in order for it to be finalized. First, the provisional grant is time-limited. The city has six months to meet the requirements of the grant contract agreement, which in our case is by January the 9th, 2023. If a city doesn't meet those requirements, then the grant is lost. And the process must be started all over again the next time applications are accepted. So, second, the city must demonstrate sufficient funds to complete the project. And city financing through a loan order, which is the request this evening, fulfills this requirement. Third, the site in the building must be used as a free public library for at least 20 years. In our case, the Sawyer Free Library meets this requirement, because the property deed and legislation that are in place stipulate that the Sawyer Free Library is obliged to hold the property as a free public library for the benefit of the people in Gloucester in perpetuity. And then, fourth, the city must be authorized to enter into and manage contracts for the construction and have unlimited access to the property. And the city and the library have put a memorandum of understanding in place that grants this authorization. Once the requirements are satisfied and the grant contract agreement is executed, MBLC guarantees distribution of the grant funds over five fiscal years, with the first installment paid in '23 and the last in '27. I'll also note that there are project milestones with each of these payments. The first project milestone is the execution of the grant agreement. And the second project milestone is when the construction plans and specifications are 100% complete. And, so, and just to recap, that the grant award is a little over $9 Million. And then, there is a green incentive of about $270,000 that's tied to LEED certification. In our case, the goal is for gold LEED certification, and that amount is paid out as one-month sum. As mentioned to you at the July City Council meeting, the project is subject to a number of city approval processes. The timeframe for those approvals has shifted a bit because of modifications to the exterior facade that has been requested by the Historic District Commission. Those modifications, the requests, have been well-received by the library and the architects. And we're currently working to respond to them. And we'll proceed with the city planning processes likely in early 2023. The project cost to be covered by the loan order, total $29 Million. The construction cost of $22 Million is informed by the expertise of the construction manager that we brought onboard in August, as well as our owner's project manager and professional estimators, PM and C. We are still working with a total project budget of $28 Million and are fully committed to completing the project within that amount. However, the city is protecting itself against cost escalation and unforeseen circumstances by building in an extra $1 Million into the owner contingency. This raises that contingency from 8%, which is what you would normally see, up to 11%. The construction of the project is projected to take between 18 and 24 months, which will fall over three fiscal years. Approximately 15% of the cost will be in the first fiscal year, 65% in the second, and 20% in the third and final year. In addition to the MBLC grant, funds are being raised through the Sawyer Library Foundation. The Foundation Board and the Sawyer Free Library Board of Trustees consists of nonprofit and business professionals with deep ties to the Gloucester community and substantial fundraising experience. The Sawyer Library Foundation has a 15-member steering committee with a comprehensive approach to raising the remaining funds. We have many initiatives that are in the works that include applications from federal, state, and nonprofit sources, as well as campaigns and cultivated activities for individuals and corporate donors. A reasonable projection is that 60% of the remaining funds and the larger contributions will come from federal, state, and nonprofit sources, and 40% from individual and corporate donations. So, launched in May, the public fundraising campaign Sawyer Free 2025 has traction and momentum. It's really exciting to watch the money coming in, including the MBLC grant. Total proceeds now stand at just over $15.2 Million. And that's up almost $200,000 since the Budget and Finance Committee. We're extremely grateful to our corporate donors. So, the Institution for Savings, Gorton's, Cape Anne Savings Bank, Bank Gloucester, and SGB Automotive for their generous contributions, as well as the hundreds of individuals who have supported the Sawyer Free 2025 campaign. The library is obligated to continue the capital campaign to raise funds until the project costs have been paid in full. There are two sections of the memorandum of understanding between the city and the library that deal with this. Section 1 states that the library shall actively solicit gifts, grants, and donations for the project and shall allocate all gifts, grants, and donations to the project, whether they are designated as such or have no specific designation until all project costs have been paid in full. And then, section 6 states that the library shall furnish the city with a detailed report of the results of all of the library's fundraising efforts semiannually, which is every six months. So, the Sawyer Free Library Corporation, led by the Board of Trustees, has invested and committed $3.4 Million to the renovation and addition project, which equates to approximately 60% of its assets. The Library Corporation also has a fiduciary responsibility to the ongoing operations of the library and will be retaining the remaining amount, 40%, which is approximately $2.3 Million to support building maintenance, public library programming, technology, and the Saunders House, as well as transition costs related to moving expenses and the lease of temporary space. So, the function of the loan order is to authorize the financing. And to be clear, the MBLC grant agreement can only be executed once it's in place. John, would you like to add anything more about municipal financing? Not hearing from John Dunn, I'd like to...
Jenny, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
No, I think you've done a very good job of presenting where we are. Yep.
Okay. I will stop sharing and would just like to thank the many people who have supported the project in bringing it to this point. Certainly, the members of the Library Corporation and the Foundation Board, city administration and city managers, and of course, our terrific library staff. And also to mention the Budget and Finance Committee council members as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. Okay, anyone else like to speak in favor as we continue the public hearing? Madam Clerk, I see, so far, I see four folks. I think Mearne Sibley, as the Chair of the Board, would be the first person to bring in to speak on behalf of the board. Mearne, would you come in and join our meeting and introduce yourself and your address? And you have three minutes to speak to us. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. You can hear me, right?
Yes, loud and clear. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm Mearne Sibley. I live on Mount Pleasant Avenue in East Gloucester. And I'm President of the Board of the Trustees of Sawyer Free Library. And I want to start by saying that an investment in Sawyer Free Library is an investment in our whole community. Since our library is open and free to all, people of all ages and backgrounds, it benefits everyone in the city. And our library is a great example of a true public-private partnership. For close to 100 years, the city of Gloucester has appropriated funds to support the library. And the Library Corporation, in turn, has maintained the library building and the library grounds. And it has supported library programs for the benefit of everyone. So, the loan order that we're requesting tonight, or that the city is requesting, I should say, is furthering this partnership. The city would provide a loan to allow the library to renovate and expand the library building, providing a 21st-century library to our city. And the Library Corporation would repay this loan over a few years. And as all of you know, Gloucester is going through a significant change, and the library is key in this transition. Gloucester needs to retain its young adults and future workers. Gloucester needs to attract businesses that will strengthen the economy. Gloucester needs to foster community connectedness and support families who will build a life here. Our library is a community hub located in the heart of our city. Strengthening the library will benefit all Gloucester residents as our city heads into its fifth century. This new 21st-century Sawyer Free Library will be a center of intellectual and social engagement for our community. Our renovated and expanded library will have an auditorium, meeting rooms, study rooms, a makerspace, a team room, and a beautiful expanded children's room. These will all be spaces for people to gather together, so we can all connect to experts, to neighbors, colleagues, and fellow learners. We, on the Board of Trustees of the library, have been working very hard for more than five years to make this project a reality. Counselors, I must tell you that this loan is essential to the project. Without the loan, the city will not be able to accept a $9.3 Million construction grant from the state. Also, the available funds from this loan will allow the construction of the library renovation and addition to begin early in 2023, just a few months from now. The library will be paying back the loan over the next four to five years. We have already received grants, donations, and pledges for more than half the total cost of the project. And we are confident in our ability to raise the rest of the funds over this time period of four to five years. Your yes vote is a vote for all the people of our city, for their future prosperity and well-being. Thank you.
Thank you, Mearne. Madam Clerk, if you could do the timing going forward to make sure that people stay to a three-minute max, that would be great. Because I'm sure we're going to have a lot of people that want to speak on this matter. So, bring in the next person to speak in favor of this loan order.
Good evening. This is Richard Quaitman, 10 Denison Street. I'm speaking tonight, however, as President of the Board of Temple Akbar Akim, 86 Middle Street, here in Gloucester. As you all know, the temple and the library are next-door neighbors. In fact, we're feeling right now that we're going to be the meat in the sandwich with the Y building on one side of the street and the library on the other side of the street. But both of these projects are critical and important steps for the city. I come to you tonight to express the full support of Temple Akbar Akim for the expansion of the library. As we are often called, the people of the book. The library is a wonderful and important part of our community. And we look forward to working with the library and the city as this very, very important project moves forward. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Richard. Next person to speak in favor?
Good evening. This is Sally Bradley Golding. And I live at 201 Atlantic Road. And I'm also a member of the Steering Committee for the Sawyer Free Library Foundation. Tonight, I'd like to express my support for the expansion and renovation of Sawyer Free Library. Just this past weekend, I was listening to Milk Street Cafe Radio. And Adam Gopnik, who is also a staff writer for The New Yorker, was visiting the show. And he was bemoaning the unexpected closure in New York City and his neighborhood of two institutions. One was the local coffee shop, what we would call a diner up here, that had been there for 40 years. And the other was an independently-owned hardware store that had been there for 45 years. And these two organizations, in his mind, represented his neighborhood in the best possible way. And the loss of these two places, his words were, "The loss of places where people come together across class, across kind, in cultural spaces, where everyone is welcome and a sense of commonality is shared by all." Adam went on to express his concern that in our polarized and siloed existences, we are losing our blending places, which offer us the richness of a common and shared life. How these words spoke to me, it was if Adam Gopnik was indeed talking about the critical role played by the Sawyer Free Library today in Gloucester and Cape Anne. And how much more, a larger and improved physical structure with a myriad of assets within can benefit our community, a place accessible and welcoming to all. Sawyer Free Library is already a binding agent for our town by supporting a myriad of nonprofit organizations, our public schools, our local artists. I could go on and on. This new and improved SFL will offer so much more. And I just really want to thank the city for the past support, the present support, and hope that there will be much future support, so that we can see this dream come true. and hope that there will be much future support so that we can see this dream come true. Thank you.
Thank you, Sally. Next person to speak in favor?
D.C. Councilors, my name is Steve Maniachi, and as a kid from Liberty Street, I was essentially raised in the Sawyer Free Library. I got my first library card in the early eighties and was one of the last generations that didn't have the internet. Google didn't provide me information about a report I was working on. I had to visit the library, use a card catalog, or work with an amazing librarian to find the information I needed. Then I crossed my fingers that the book was on the shelf. I was exhilarated when the book was there. If the book wasn't there, well, let's just say my Catholic mother would not have been pleased with what I said. Now, as a husband and father, the library has once again become a focal point of my life. My wife Lenore and daughter Helena love the library, and to see them pick out books in the same place I walked around for the first time over forty years ago is mind-blowing. And to read a four-year-old daughter a bedtime story from a book that came from our library is special. Those books have increased her vocabulary, her confidence and her sense of wonder. Anyone who has children knows how much your heart skips a beat whenever you see curiosity, excitement on your child's face. Since I was born and raised in Gloucester, I remember prior city votes to fund the library that were unsuccessful. So when I learned the Sawyer Free Library has raised money for improvements again, but cannot unlock grant funding unless our city leaders partner with them, then I knew that I needed to come before you and ask that you please approve this more-than-worthy loan candidate and invest in them as they have invested in us all these years. Did you know after City Hall, Sawyer Free is the most trafficked public building in the city? The library serves as a learning lab and social connector. It's where you hold your meetings, educate your citizens, give people who have nowhere else to go warmth, electricity, technology and company for free. You don't get that anyplace else. So why is this loan approval even a discussion? Next to City Hall, the library is one of the major focal points of this beautiful city. To know there's a potential that remodeling the library could be held up if you do not vote yes to ensure that the funds from ready public donors is available is rattling. Will the price tag go up if we don't seize this chance like we should have years ago? The city's heartbeat is already missing with the library temporarily closed. So what's next? Removing the man-of-the-wheel statue because it costs too much to weatherize? It just wouldn't happen. The truth is, none of you will vote on something that has an adverse effect on children. We live our lives to make sure our children are healthy, safe and provided for. We work hard to ensure they are given as many tools as needed to succeed. Politics, money or policy should never get in the way of our children being our priorities. Vote no when you're turning your backs on the children of the city, on the young families of the city, on the most needy and the most nourished of the city that calls Sawyer Free Home. So what are we doing here? Let's unanimously vote yes and continue to enjoy one of the beautiful and historical beacons of our city, the Sawyer Free Libraries. Thank you for your consideration.
Before you get off, can you confirm your address? I think you said you grew up at Liberty Street, but I don't remember if that's where you are living today.
Yes, Valerie, I'm at Ten Liberty Street in Gloucester, same house.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Next person to speak in favor in this public hearing?
Can you hear me?
We can. Thank you, Lisa. Introduce yourself and your address. Thank you.
Okay, my name is Lisa Orlando Ryan. I live at three thirty-four Essex Avenue here in Gloucester. I'm a homeowner, taxpayer and lifelong resident of Gloucester, as were my parents and my grandparents. I raised my two now-grown daughters in our gorgeous city, and the Sawyer Free Library was an instrumental asset in their education and upbringing. I wholeheartedly and undeniably support the library renovation expansion project. A new library will be an integral component in revitalizing our fair city and be a valuable and meaningful resource for years and years to come. I would also like to add that I'm a professional librarian. I received my master's degree at Simmons College, and I worked at the Sawyer Free Library from two thousand three to two thousand seventeen. I moved on to continue my career in Beverly five years ago, where I have had the pleasure of working in a state-of-the-art building. Let me tell you, this expansion is essential and so necessary. I am speaking from from direct experience. Working in another library has opened my eyes to the reality of how obsolete and unsafe the current building is. I hear a lot of people ask, "Well, why do we need a bigger library?" Well, space is a hot commodity in libraries these days. We need contemporary meeting rooms, private study rooms, advanced technology opportunities, safe hallways and bathrooms, a larger children's room with separate storytime and craft space, and climate-controlled areas for our special collections, so they don't crumble. Sadly, none of this exists in Gloucester, but is so available in so many other communities. I say Gloucester deserves all of this. The time is now. We've been trying to get this done for almost twenty years. We can't lose this grant money. This library is an investment and a gift to our community. As libraries evolve and change, so must our obligation to the community to remain relevant, meaningful and useful. I kindly urge you, the city council, to approve this loan.
Thank you, Lisa. Who else would like to speak in favor of this loan order?
This is Curtis Galred. Can you hear me?
We can. Can you speak a little louder, Curtis, and tell us your address?
I'm Curtis Galred. I live at thirty-four Old Nugent Farm Road. I've been pleased to listen to the people who've been speaking in favor of the library. I'd just like to add a few personal observations. When my wife and I moved here twenty-four years ago, getting a library card was among our top priority, second only to putting our name on the Harbor Masters waitlist for a mooring. We've really benefited and enjoyed the variety of resources that the libraries had over the years. We've seen them develop new programs and expand the services, all of them available free to the public. But as time passed, technology developed, programs became more creative, and the existing facilities simply restricted activities or created some problems. We believe the library is one of the most important institutions in our community, one of those that serve the public and enrich our lives. Some time ago, I attended a public meeting for a suggestion of the resources and services to include in a new facility, one of a number of meetings. I think the new library design reflects input from those meetings. It builds on the rich history, and it's just a unique opportunity with the grant from the state. I really want to speak in support and urge the counselors to approve the loan request. Thank you.
Thank you, Curtis. Who else would like to speak to the council in favor of this loan order?
Hello, this is Peter Lawrence. I live at eleven Planters Neck Road in Gloucester. And I was going to say, I've heard criticism that the library shouldn't fund this building, but I think we've heard enough to say, okay, this is not about funding the library, but providing a loan. But I think what's very important is to understand that this is not about the building itself, but what this building will make possible. This building will enable many free existing programs to improve, to expand what they cover, and to allow more people to participate. And the building will enable new programs to start. Among its many free programs, the library provides digital access to the twenty-four percent of households in Gloucester that do not have broadband access. And the library provides the use of computers to the eighteen percent of households that do not have any computers, as well as many more people. The library works with over one hundred local groups and organizations, and this allows these organizations to expand both the quality and quantity of their services, also providing for many organizations meeting space they don't have. I could go on, but I won't. I urge the counselors to please favorably consider this proposal for loan for the library. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. So anyone else that would like to raise their hand and speak to the council for up to three minutes in favor? Seeing none? Correct, Madam Clerk?
That's correct.
So at this point, we'd like to ask anyone that would like to speak in opposition of this loan order. You have up to three minutes. Do you raise your hand? Seeing none? Correct, Madam Clerk?
That is correct.
Oh, I see one, Linda McCaristin. Linda, if you would come in and introduce yourself, you have up to three minutes to speak to us and state your name and your address.
Thank you. Am I unmuted?
We can hear you beautifully. Thank you, Linda.
Thank you. I have not followed closely the planning for the new library or the financing for it, but I'm here at this meeting and I am listening to the presentation to this point. And one of the things, the thing that has struck me is how similar in tone and values and goals this proposal is to the larger MAPC overlay district plans for Gloucester as a as a regional hub and a gateway city and all of these different things. This seems like this seems to be a proposal for a service, you know, more than a service, of course, but a gigantic expenditure, however the money, wherever it comes from, for a city that isn't even here yet and that many of us don't want to see be here. It just seems on a scale, it doesn't seem to be on a scale with the Gloucester that we are and have known. And you'll have to accept the limitations of my involvement in this project. I have not been paying close attention, but I am struck by the by the values that were embodied in those who are asking for the cooperation of the council in coming up with the city's part of the money for this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Anyone else like to speak in opposition for up to three minutes? I see no more hands, Madam Clerk. Do you agree?
That's correct.
Okay, at this point, I'd like to ask, Madam Clerk, if you could report to the council, any correspondences and communications?
Yes, you received all the emails and the communications. The biggest the number of names on the most, the communication was Tracy Davis from the Sawyer Free Library, which had about four hundred and three signatures or names in support of this project and other individual communications, email communications for a total of four hundred and twenty-nine names in support of this project.
Thank you. Counselors, it's now our opportunity to ask questions to the applicant. So who would like to begin as part of the public hearing process? This is questions only. This is not our deliberation. Counselor Gross?
Yes, and Jenny answered one of them, but I have a question in the MOU, and I don't know if this is for the mayor's office or for Jenny. So hopefully Jill can help me out and help us here. I'm trying to find page four. One C, so the, on the restrictions of expenditures, it does, I think Jenny also, she did address this, that the library will expend all their fundraising efforts to repay this loan other than the the current fifty thousand possibly raised to seventy-five thousand dollar per year annual appeal. I think that one, that one got answered. She answered the one on page six, but let's see, it's on page seven. Sorry for this. Six C. Yeah, so this is a question for the, and Jenny brought this up too, the semi-annual report. Jill, would that be passed on to us just as a matter of course?
We'd be happy to share that with you.
Yeah, okay, that's it. That's all I got.
Great, and I would like to mention to the members of the public, because right now we have sixty-six folks that are on the call. I'd like to just let you know that if you want to see the MOU, it's in tonight's packet, and it begins on page ninety-four of a packet that has two hundred and twenty-nine pieces of material. So if you look on the city council website, and then you go to council packets, you'll see all this material. It's an eleven-page document. Just want to make sure that we're being transparent, and it's out there for you to see. Counsel Grow and then Counsel Worthley.
Thank you. Jenny, would you mind discussing a little bit about the library strategy moving forward in terms of fundraising? And what getting this grant and getting this loan means in terms of creating a sense of stability for potential donors?
Thank you for that question, Counselor Grow. I think the loan order provides so much confidence in our project, and that we will be able to leverage that in our fundraising efforts. We've had a tremendous amount of people, or not tremendous, some people have been waiting to see whether the city supports this project or not prior to making a commitment to the campaign. So the city council's voice and support absolutely will bolster our fundraising efforts.
Thank you.
Thank you. I forget who I had called on. I just had to kill a stink bug. That's why I got a little distracted for a second, but I'm sorry. Who had their hand raised for a council question? Counsel Worthley, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I hope you got this stink bug okay.
I'm sorry. I hate to say I did crush him, but I'm very sorry. I know it's very violent of me.
It's okay. Benedict, thank you for your presentation tonight and for everybody who spoke tonight. I know it takes courage and takes time out of people's days to support anything, or to oppose it for that matter, and I think we all appreciate the testimony. I asked a number of questions at Budget and Finance Committee meeting, and I appreciate the thorough responses that anybody who answered those questions gave. I have a couple more that I think will be helpful to all of us, well, depending on the answers, I guess. The first one, I asked this one at the committee level. If this council or the public had designed types of questions, would that be during the loan authorization or when you come before the city council for some of your zoning relief?
Our CAO, Jill Cahill?
So the matter in front of you, and as council wants to reans, the matter before you is the loan order. So it would not be appropriate to ask design-related questions. As we presented to the council a couple of months ago, I think the library will be back in front of you likely for a special permit related to height relief. At that point, you can ask those related questions. And they will be in front of other boards that are specific to their purview, but tonight, your purview is strictly the financing.
Thank you very much.
So can we, can I just say, can we all have one question, and then we'll return back to Counsel Worthley? Is there a counselor that has not asked a question of the applicant? Counsel O'Neill?
Yes, thank you. Given the grilling that I gave Paul Ryan, I'm wondering
Given the grilling that I gave Paul Ryan, I'm wondering the library is going to be equipped with computers and state-of-the-art technology, correct? And what have you, what, what steps have you taken to ensure that, that it, that that technology is upgradable? So that, you know, in a few years, it's not obsolete. Have you taken any steps or precautions or special things to make sure that it's upgradable?
Thank you for that question, Counselor O'Neill. We're very grateful that Ryan Knowles is serving as a consultant on our project. Sorry?
I didn't know that.
Yes, and one of the benefits is that we are able to look at integrating the library I T infrastructure and building systems with other city buildings, and that results in efficiencies across our facilities.
Very nice. Thank you. Thank you.
Any counselors that have not asked a question? Counsel O'Hara.
Thank you. I'd like to ask this question to John Dunn, if I could, please. John, and this is a question, John and I talked as I, I've spoken to many people associated with this project. So this is a question that, that I asked of John in our conversation. John, as your prior employer, the city of Beverly, I don't know if you can just expand on, on the city of Beverly, they renovated, I think, their main library. Is the city of Beverly their library that owned, is that similar ownership? Or is that owned entirely by the city of Beverly? I'm just trying to expand on the knowledge of, of our relationship with Soyafree compared to, say, another city of equal size and Beverly would be a good example. Thank you.
Yes, Counselor, as, as we discussed in Beverly, both libraries, and there are two, are owned by the city and there was no issue. So both libraries were expanded and paid for by the city. So it was not, it's a little bit different up here. But you know, what happened in Beverly was that both libraries were expanded and paid for in, in terms of debt service by the city.
Terrific. Thank you very much for that, John.
Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
Any other counselor that hasn't spoken yet? Would like to ask a question? Seeing none, I'm going to ask a question and then we'll, we'll allow Counselor Worthley to ask another question. Piggybacking on the comment that Tony Gross had made about, that's on page 100 of the packet. Item C, the semi-annual copies of all fundraising materials used by the library, detailed report of the results of all library fundraising efforts, including but not limited to these relating to projects, including pledges made, funds received, costs incurred in fundraising and contributions made by the library to the city. I, I recall that I think John Dunn said that, yes, we can see that material. Is that something that we could see as a referral to B and F? So it could be properly discussed? Is that a possibility? And I guess I'll ask that question to our CFO, John Dunn.
Well, actually, I'm going to kind of defer this to Suzanne Egan, you know, to, you know, whether anything that we see is public record.
Okay. That's fair. Suzanne Egan, can you, can you, thank you for being here, by the way. And if you could answer that question, that would be great. Suzanne, you are muted. Now you're, now you are, now you are unmuted.
Okay, thank you. Yes, so the documents that will be submitted by the library for their fundraising reports and the other annual report that they have to submit will be a public record. And that can be referred to the city council and to B and F for discussion.
Great. Thank you so much. Okay, I'm going to go back to Counselor Worthley because he had another question.
Thank you, and I'll be brief. I have a couple. I understand that this loan would then create the opportunity for the 9 million plus, I think it's 9 million, $30,000 grant. It's my understanding, but please correct me if I'm wrong, that that grant could be higher. I know that Senator Tar is working with about 14 to 16 other legislators on a post-COVID increase due to supply chain and inflation, but I just want to be sure that this council knows, and if you could correct me, Jenny, if I'm wrong, that if that grant comes in higher, this action helps us get that additional money. And if for some reason this were a novo, we wouldn't be eligible to that for increase over the 9 million.
So thank you for that question. And yes, I keep in regular contact with the efforts that are going on and the conversations between M B L C and the legislature. And my understanding is that actions taken by council at this time will not affect the outcome of that decision. I would encourage council, if the council would be willing to write a letter in support of those efforts, that, that would be well received by Senator Tar. And I think the sense is that the timing, they, you know, there, there is surplus funds, there's ARPA funding, there is year-end funding, and the legislatures are looking all the time about the allocations of those three different amounts of money and what's there and where it's going to go. The latest is that it's going to take a little bit of time to figure out exactly how this could be distributed equitably, both within the grant program as it's been run and the 14 or so libraries that are in this same situation this year. So it may not be until year end that a decision is made on this. So there is still plenty of time to advocate. And particularly in Gloucester's situation where the city council is looking at financing the project, we are still looking for the funds for the project of which state funds are an eligible source for us.
Great. You said and, and eligible, right? It is ineligible, okay. So that means that the 9 million could be more and it wouldn't impact, it would impact in that the fundraising wouldn't need to be as robust if the state comes in with that additional funds. I just think that's important for us to know because that's a thing. If we get this, if this moves forward, we are guaranteed the 9 million and it could be a 9 million plus number from there.
That's correct. And I will say, you know, it's the full car press on the fundraising until the goal is achieved.
Okay, I'd like to, I did see Counselor Grow raise his hand. I have two other questions.
So let's, so let's go back to Counselor Grow and then we'll go back.
I just wanted to make it, I wanted to make it clear that if we decide to vote this loan order down, the 9 million goes away. I didn't want people to think that it's either 9 million or nothing at this point. And if we get more, then that's a bonus moving forward.
That's correct.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Worthley, go ahead. You have the floor again. No one else has.
So thank you to the mayor's office and to Ms. Cahill. We've received the MOU after our budget and finance meeting. So we didn't have a chance to ask questions. And the only one I have, it's really not about the MOU, just an understanding I have is that not only is the library in this memory of understanding committing to raising all the funds for the principal, but also for any interest the city encourages on these loans. I think that's a question for Mr. Dunn. If you can just verify that.
John Dunn.
Well, okay. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. What, what is a question, Counselor?
Sure. That since our budget and finance meeting, we received a memory of understanding that commits, the library is committed to not only raising funds for the principal of this loan, but also for any interest the city encourages. Is that your understanding? I just want to make sure that the public and the council also knows that commitment has been made.
John, could you speak loud, louder again? I'm sorry.
That is true.
Okay, that's page two, top of page two. And then my last question, this is also a John Dunn question. Is there a deadline? No, maybe deadlines aren't the word, but is there an expectation from the city side that all the funds have to be raised in a certain point of time to cover that loan and interest? Or would the library have the ability to continue fundraising to offset the loan?
The library can, you know, basically fundraise forever. The expectation is that this will be covered over the next five to six or seven years.
Okay. I think that answers my questions. Thank you.
John, any other further questions? Counsel O'Hara.
Thank you. I don't know who wants to field this question, but obviously this is a, a unique relationship with the city and Soyafree Library. But with that said, has, has been asked and has been noted that this is all about fundraising. And the Soyafree Library paying back the, the debt should, should this be sticked tonight? Is there some way to have a representative, the library, whether the fundraising entity or within the library itself, to come before the council annually? October, November to, to tell the council where they stand, what their plans are as far as going forward with fundraising and, and paying the debt again to speak to the council annually. Thank you.
Who would like to answer that? Because I think we, that was section C of the part MOU.
Yeah, I think Counselor O'Hara, I think that's the question that the council president had and Counselor Gross had asked previously in the MOU that they'll report to the city and we will then submit that to the council to B and F. And at that time, I'm sure the library fundraising team or board would be happy to come and speak to it. So I think it's, I think it's semi-annually. So yes.
Yeah, I, I understand the report. What my question was, can we get a representative to come before the council annually to tell us where they stand, where they're going to pay this debt back to the city?
So I will defer that then to, if you're asking for a library board member to do that, I don't feel comfortable answering that. But we, as the city, have already required that to happen semi-annually. But Jenny, if you want to answer on behalf of the board, whether or not you'd be willing to come before council at that time, or I'm not sure, Counselor O'Hara, is it separate? Do you want it separately than the semi-annually?
No, no, no. Annually, once, once he has somebody from whether the fundraising entity or the library itself come before the council to just explain where they stand, where they're going, and things just give us an update. Thank you.
Yes, I thank you for that comment or request, Counselor O'Hara. And I know members of the library ward and foundation are both in attendance this evening and will certainly make that happen.
So you, so you will make that, you're making that commitment that, that you would be willing to have a member of the board join us at a B and F meeting to, when we do those reports. So counselors can ask questions and yes, okay, great. Does that answer your question, Counselor?
To some, to some extent, the question is come before the full council or because I think this, I, I think this is important from the standpoint of, of us being the representatives of people for the people to hear where the, the library is and where the library is going as far as paying back the debt to this, to the taxpayers. Thank you.
So without objection, I would say that we could certainly have that conversation at B and F and have someone come back when we're reporting that out of subcommittee unless John Dunn, do you want to, do you want to comment on that, our CFO?
We could, we could perfectly help, you know, report to B and F on a regular basis as to what, you know, where we are in, in terms of debt issuance and how we, you know, and what comes back in. So that's not a problem at all.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Gross.
Yeah, to Counsel O'Hara's point there, I think that it's much more appropriate to go before the full council because you know, the council members can't, you know, one thing, we're all at a full council meeting. And another thing, there's no deliberations, you know, just for all appearance of openness. Full council should be where, where, and also it would give the library a bigger audience to showcase some stuff. So I think putting it in a, in a standing committee is probably not the best place for that kind of report. The, the hand, the written reports, yes, absolutely.
Okay, counselors, without objection, Mern Sibley has her hand raised. So I think it might be appropriate, seeing that she's the chair of the board, without objection, to bring her in just to add to this. Joanne, if you could bring her back in, that would be great. If I need to help promote her again, I can certainly do that. Let me do that. I'm promoting her to panelists. Mern, would you reintroduce yourself and, and add to this conversation?
Hi, hello. Can you hear me?
We can. Thank you.
I, I just wanted to, you know, clarify the situation. It seems like we're going off and I would be, I as president would be happy to go to the city council once a year and talk about what we're doing, how our, how our fundraising is going. That's not an issue. Definitely a good idea. I'd be happy to do it.
Great. That's great. Thank you. Counsel Worthley, oh wait, Counsel Nolan had his hand raised, and then I'll go back to Counsel Worthley. Counsel Nolan.
The biannually reports are good, but however, if we can get an annual update, not just on the fundraising, but on where they are in their project and how far they've come along to let us engage with our constituents that the library has met this goal, they're at this point, you know, some exciting news. Something's changed. This has come up. So it's not necessarily, in my opinion, to be looking down their throats on the fundraising. We'll get that twice a year, but just to show up in front of the council and give us a, you know, what's up with progress on the actual building, not just the fundraising, but the actual great event of this happening.
Great. Thank you. Counsel O'Neill.
Yes, thank you. I would, I would also like to hear from the library directly to the city council. I think that's important, just to echo what everybody else just said. People want to know. It's a lot of money. People are concerned about that. So if it's proper for the full council, then the, the general public can, can hear and see what's going on. I do have some questions, so I don't know if I should ask them now or?
This is a time to ask the question. So why don't you ask one and then we'll see if someone else hasn't spoken and we'll come back to you. So you have the floor for a question.
Will this building be solar powered?
Thank you for that question, Counselor O'Neill. And yes, sustainability is one of the key design principles of this building. It will be designed to be net zero ready, and we do intend to have a solar array.
Thank you. Net zero ready. I'm not quite sure what that means, but I know what net zero means, obviously, but so you'll be working towards that after the opening, et cetera?
Yes, so I, I think C A O Jill Cahill requested that questions about the design actually not be a part of the public hearing because the public hearing is part of the loan order. But I would be happy to meet with you and speak with you about design questions. But I would be happy to meet with you and speak with you about design questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Okay, who else hasn't asked a question? Okay, I think Counsel Worthley has another question. You have the floor, Counsel.
Thank you. This is my last question. And I think the public, a lot of people in the public have been asking me and they want to know this, if they want to donate, what do they do? How would they go about doing that? And that's either for you, Jenny, or for Ms. Sibley? I know it's a tough question.
It's a tough question. Thank you for that delightful question. Yes, we have a website, SawyerFree2025.org. That's the place to go for donating, for volunteering. There's certainly work to be done. So yes, I seem to recall, Jeff, at the budget and finance, you actually put that right up in your identification there. So yes, SawyerFree2025.org.
And there's a matching proposal. I read that in the newspaper, I think, yesterday. Could you share that with us?
Yes, I'm not the most authoritative voice on that one, but yes, the foundation has arranged with an anonymous donor to, she's going to donate $100,000 and wants a match from the community. So that's happening right now, I think, through the end of the year.
Okay, and it will be a tax write-off for anybody who donated before the end of this year. Is that right?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, just want to make sure everyone knows.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. Does anyone else have any questions? Seeing none, I'd like to close the public hearing and ask for the committee report from Counsel Memard, Chair of BNF.
Thank you. And thank you, Jenny and Mern and all your team. All of my questions were addressed in the Budget and Finance Committee's review with you. And I was very satisfied with that. Budget and Finance Committee, on a motion by myself, accepted by Counsel Worthley, voted by roll call three in favor, zero opposed, recommend that the city council approve this loan order as follows. That $29 million is appropriated for the cost of financing the renovation and expansion of the Sawyer Free Library and costs incidental or related thereto. And to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the mayor is authorized to borrow $29 million and to issue bonds or notes, therefore, under Chapter 44 of the general laws or any other enabling authority, and that the mayor is authorized to take any other action necessary or convenient to carry out this project. The total amount authorized to be borrowed pursuant to this order shall be reduced by any grants received by the city from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts or any agency thereof on account of this project. And further order that the treasurer is authorized to file an application with the municipal finance oversight board to qualify under Chapter 44A of the general laws, any or all of the bonds authorized by this order and to provide such information and to execute such documents as the municipal finance oversight board may require for these purposes. And I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Memard and seconded by Counsel Worthley. I would like to amend this motion by requesting an annual presentation to the full city council to cover matters discussed in Section 6, Item Number C of the MOU, and I so move. I believe that was Counsel Gross. Yes? No? Who was it? I wasn't looking.
Nolan.
Thank you, Counsel Nolan. Is there a discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, roll call vote. Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross?
Yes.
Counsel Grow?
Yes.
Counsel Majota?
Yes.
Counsel Memard?
Yes.
Counsel Nolan?
Smile, Jenny. Yes.
Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
Counsel O'Neal?
Yes.
Counsel Worthley?
Yes.
Yes as have it on the amendment, nine in favor, zero opposed. So now we're back to the main amendment with that additional component. So now we're back to the discussion. So I think Counsel Grow was the first to have his hand raised on the amendment. I mean, I'm sorry, we're through the amendment, on the main motion.
On the amendment. I want to say that I think of a library as is important and a piece of our infrastructure, as I do the roads, I do the water system, I do our public safety, that a community is judged frankly on its level of commitment to educating its community and uniting its community in general. And the library plays a critical part of that role. In fact, I really despair right now at hearing libraries closing nationwide, that communities not supporting their library systems, that you have communities that are banning books and banning thought. And I am so grateful that that is not something that we are facing in our community. So even if this loan order were simply a loan order to fund the entire construction of the library, I would be supporting it because I see it as such an intrinsic part of what our community is and means and the identity that we seek to achieve as living in Gloucester. From a personal perspective, I look at the importance that the library had in the development of my children, that it created an environment where they began the process of loving learning, of exploring the world and of meeting their friends and other parents who, you know, they would join and build that community. So I want to thank the people who talk about our library as a beating heart of the city. I admit, I don't go very often, to be honest with you. You know, I'm busy, but I don't. Just because I don't indulge in it on a regular basis doesn't mean that I don't support and understand the importance of it within the general realm of our community as a whole. And I see this as such an opportunity to step forward to the next century, to commit to education, to literacy, to community, to learning, and to reaching to communities. Another gentleman spoke about the need to approach our lower-income communities that don't have the access to computers and the internet that most of us take for granted. And to be able to have that opportunity and bring that to a community, to include them in our community, is so critical. And I am grateful for those who have given so far. I hope everybody chooses to give and we find a way to pay this money back. But again, even if we didn't, and the city will be on the hook regardless, but even if we didn't, I would be supporting this. I think it's a model that allows us to create something in the community that we will genuinely do the public partnership in a way that is really meaningful. And I'm grateful to everybody who has been involved in this process so far and the years that they have put forward in this project and the years that are going to be coming forward. I am giddy with excitement and I will be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Who else would like to discuss this? Counsel Nolan.
So the question was asked of John Dunham of Beverly. And to show the way that Gloucester benefits with the union between the Sawyer Free Library and the City of Gloucesters, we're getting the same excellent service out of something where a group of people and volunteers and donors are actually paying the burden of what we get to use for free. They had to pay that out of the city coffers. So I think maybe this to be more important and special is the fact that it's the community coming together to rebuild and continue the beautiful thing as a Sawyer Free Library. And I will be supporting this 100% and Jason, you did a great job. Great job, man.
Thank you, Counselor. Who else would like to participate in this discussion? Counsel Gross and then Counsel Majota.
Yeah, and Sean, you stole my thunder because I was going to mention the Beverly and I was going to thank Jamie for bringing that up because really, we are benefiting, you know, even if from today on, you know, we would still be getting a half-price library, but we're not, they're committed to giving us 100% of the payment through their fundraising efforts, which are just Herculean to say the least. You know, Jason, you know, really said it all when he talked about the need for having, you know, the intellectual component that our city has always had. And this library has managed to move itself into the contemporary times technologically, even though they've been handicapped through structural issues and wiring and all sorts of different things. And they have, you know, brought us all the services that we have needed. But they've been handicapped by a structure that's just not able to deliver it. And I did a, during one of my careers, I was a home inspector and they had, they hired me. Of course, I donated the services to do a home inspection or do a building inspection, not in engineering, but a home-type inspection of its building envelope and interiors. And that was in the late 90s. And it was not in that greatest shape then. Now that, you know, there's been money put into it to stop the leaks and, you know, caulk the windows and, you know, fix a few rattles and take care of some of the heat system, you know, Band-Aids. But this building is in desperate need of a total overhaul. And I would just really like to give my show of gratitude for the people who are moving this forward, from Jenny to Mern and Barry and all the people who have put money forward and all the people who will. We really have benefited so much from having this in our community. And it is going to be another shining light on the city when we get it done. So I would just like to thank everyone and obviously I'm going to vote in favor of this.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Majota and then Counsel Memard.
Yes, just want to say I will be supporting this. Counsel Grow, I think you honestly said it perfectly. The library is a very special place for me. Just loved going there as a child and being able to read and seeing the excitement of my children getting books and starting to read and go through the process. It's amazing to see and I know they go to school and they get the books and just to go to the library on the weekends is something fun to do with them. And I have full confidence in the library committee, in their fundraising ability to be able to get this money. To have this new state-of-the-art building is very important for the community. And I just, like I said in the beginning, I will be supporting this.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Memard.
I'd just like to say that this has been a long time coming. By my count, it's effectively the fourth try out of the gate. And this is the time. Now's the time. And the groundwork has been laid and we need to move ahead. I certainly don't have a conflict of interest as a card-carrying member of the Sawyer Free Library or as a operator or as a past member of the Board of Directors or the past president. But this organization is all about Gloucester and Samuel Sawyer's heritage and the services that this kind of an institution plays, as Jason very eloquently said, is a really just crucial keystone for every aspect of our community. And if the fundraising for any reason falls short, it's our fault. You know, everyone here, everyone listening, everyone in the community, this is our library and we should all be taking advantage of that matching grant right now and get it all over and done with. You know, let's ante up, let's do our share. And thank you all to the libraries board, but I certainly will be supporting this tonight.
Thank you, Counselor. Who else would like to discuss this? Counsel Worthley.
Yes. So firstly, I want to be very thankful of all of the participants in the meeting tonight and the hard work that the library board and the fundraising team has done and the staff and the mayor's office and all the counselors. I could not agree more with some of the statements we made tonight. I think that this is not just a vote for today, and I'm not going to use the phrase, it's on the back on the mural at City Hall. But the library started in 1850 when Samuel Sawyer offered $100 to get the community to invest in the library. The City of Gloucester was incorporated in 1873. This library predates the incorporation of the City of Gloucester. And when I think about looking forward, in 50 years, most of us won't even be alive. 100 years, we definitely won't, but the library has survived generation after generation and the value of the library cannot be questioned. And so not only do I wholeheartedly support it and sense that there's a lot of support in this council, I want to be thankful to the community and for all the fundraising efforts and wish you the best of luck. I've got a lot of confidence in the work you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Who else would like to discuss this? Counsel O'Hara.
Thank you. I spend, as probably most of us have in talking with, whether Jenny, most importantly, I spend a lot of times speaking with Fran Alberti, but even spend more time speaking with Barry Weiner. And Barry, who most of us know, gentleman integrity is unmatched, true professional. He educated me on the library, things that, you know, you think you think about everything. Or he educated me on more things about what the library does, who it helps, as Jason's and others, the people that that library has helped over the decades, centuries, as Counsel Worthley has just said, it's unmatched. And, you know, as John Dunn said to me on when I, I'm sorry, John, when I grilled you, but you said tonight, what the relationship with Beverly, we're getting it, as Counsel Gross mentioned, we're getting a bargain and we have gotten a bargain. Every visitor into our city, taxpayer, child that's gone through the doors of the library. It's a wonderful institution. Again, so many people benefit from it. And it's a difficult decision for us because this is taxpayer money. But, you know, as I mentioned to Ryan and Counsel O'Neal brought up and Jenny mentioned that Ryan is a part of the team. Knowing that, knowing how much Ryan has helped the city, I'm sure he's going to make this library even better than it was going to be. But yeah, I can't say enough of everyone that I've talked with and particularly Barry Weiner. I thank Barry for educating me and I will be supporting this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else that has not had an opportunity to speak on the motion?
Seeing none, I'd like to just say two things briefly. First of all, both my kids were born here in Gloucester. My daughter Casey, who's now 34, and my son Jared, who's 22. And as children, they just loved going to the library and we would just go there all the time. And we'd sit in those chairs and we would read books and we'd take them home and it was just so awesome. So clearly, the history for all of us is really vibrant in terms of what the library does to our children. Second, I wanted to note that in the three meetings that we had at Sawyer Free Library using their space for being a present city council, it was obvious to me, even when we arrived at quarter six, how many people were still in the library. There was just, there were people buzzing everywhere. And it's really, it's a place. And with this new, all the renovations that we're going to see, it's just going to be second to none. So I'm really excited about that. And finally, I'd just like to say, as a former member of the school committee, and I'm sure Tony would attest to this, how proud we feel every year when we give our kids the Sawyer Medal Award and we're reminded of the history of the Sawyer Library and that's part of our history. So how cool it is that as we get to the 400th anniversary, that this is something that we're here to support. So I truly support this. So I think that that concludes our discussion on this. So without objection, I'd like to go to the roll call vote. Without objection. So let's go to the roll call vote. Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross?
Absolutely, yes.
Counsel Grow?
With great pleasure, yes.
Counsel Majota?
Yes.
Counsel Memard? Counsel Memard?
Yes.
Counsel Nolan?
Absolutely, yes.
Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
Counsel O'Neill?
Yes.
Counsel Worthley?
Honored to say yes. Thank you.
We're proud to say that, um, there are nine in favor, zero opposed. Um, before I conclude that, um, Counsel Gross has his hand raised.
I just have a question from Mern. Does this qualify for a match for that hundred thousand?
Well, thank you all for your support. It's wonderful.
Yeah, thank you so much.
So, second.
Counsel Grow has the motion to reconsider and it was seconded by Counsel Worthley. Is there a discussion? Seeing none, um, everyone knows that a no vote means that we don't want to reconsider. Um, Counsel Gilman, no. Counsel Gross?
No.
Counsel Grow?
No.
Counsel Majota?
No.
Counsel Memard?
No.
Counsel Nolan?
No.
Counsel O'Hara? Counsel O'Neill?
No.
Counsel Worthley?
No.
The motion to reconsider fails. Um, nine in opposition, zero in favor. I think I said that right? Yes?
Not, not, yeah, not, yeah.
Zero in favor, nine in opposition.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so thank you. Thank you all to the library, um, team, all of you for job well done and, um, appreciate the great turnout tonight. There were about seventy people here at the, um, at the highest amount. So, thank you. Um, next order of business, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Mern. Thank you, Jenny.
Next order of business is public hearing twenty twenty-two dash zero twenty-nine. Two men's Gloucester Code of Ordinances, Part Two, Chapter Twenty-two, Article Five. Stopping, standing, and park, and parking, and Article Six, Traffic Schedules, and amend, Chapter Twenty-two, Section Twenty-two dash two sixty-nine, Stop Six Intersections by Changing Alpa Road to Haven Terrace.
Yeah, I'd like to open the public hearing and I would like someone to begin to speak on behalf of, um, this recommendation.
Thank you. I'm here for this exciting, I, unfortunately, this isn't as exciting as the library, but
Yeah, we, we could have ended on a really high note there if we tried.
I know, but now we get to talk about parking. So, uh, and so the, um, what's before you and what was before ONA was the amendments to the, uh, stopping and parking ordinance. And it's a culmination of, I believe, a number of years of work with the Department of DPW, the Police Department, and also IT in bringing this parking ordinance, which hasn't been reviewed in full since the nineteen seventies, up to date. It also allows the city to enforce the new parking kiosks. Um, so there's amendments to the parking ordinance for the parking kiosks and also what it does is in the nineteen seventy version, that's still in the books, it references certain places, certain um, names of people's homes. And what we've done instead is to then refocus the ordinance and, um, use street names as identifiers. So those are the particular, it's, um, changes to the parking ordinance. And if you have any specific questions regarding it, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Suzanne. Um, so let's see first if we have any other folks that are, um, on the call that would like to speak in favor in the public hearing. Our CAO, Jill Cahill?
Sorry, uh, sorry that I didn't introduce you Suzanne. I was letting the mayor know about the success of the library vote. So thank you all for that. I just wanted to thank the rest of the team. So since taking office, the administration, um, has brought together, as, as I think you've said numerous times, the parking kiosk thing was a problem we inherited, but we take full ownership and responsibility for now. And, um, so we've been meeting weekly on Fridays, the Mayor's Office, the Police Department, the CFO, um, DPW, uh, Ryan, uh, IT's been there quite a bit. Uh, we've recently pulled in planning, um, related to the parking studies. So this has been a weekly effort to bring these kiosks online from everything, from enforcement to operations. Um, and this is a big piece of it. Um, I want to thank Rosalico Piccolo and DPW. She did a huge overview, um, went page by page through this and picked up a lot of those things that Suzanne was referencing, the kind of random homes and buildings that don't exist anymore. Um, so we hope that you'll support the changes that were made. It's been a long time coming. Um, and I do believe this, one of the things, uh, I believe it's Gilman and Memard's council order related to bringing some of the changes that were made around COVID, um, around resident parking. We also reviewed all of that through this process. So it should all be incorporated um, in this overall review. And we, the mayor, uh, asked for your support, uh, in these changes.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in favor? Anyone like to speak in opposition? Seeing none? Madam Clerk, are there any correspondences or communications?
There are none.
Councillors, are there any questions you have? Counsel O'Neill?
Thank you. I, I don't understand what parking changes have happened. I understand that, you know, we inherited the kiosk situation, but are there no parking signs put somewhere in this area? I, I, I don't, I it's just a little too vague for me, um, especially where it's my ward. So, um, but I know, hey, this Haven Terrace is, um, is a separate order, but I just want to make sure that my constituents have a place to park. So I, I don't know what's going on in this particular order, so I apologize for that. Go ahead, Sean. Oh, sorry.
Head, um, Counsel Nolan, who chairs ONA.
Uh, Tracy, so, uh, this doesn't just affect your ward, this affects the entire city.
Yep.
As far as restrictions go, there's no restrictions that have been added to where you, where you can or cannot other than the signs that are posted. We use things in reference that was in the old ordinance, such as from the tavern to tallies type situation. Instead of saying from, you know, two Western Avenue to, you know, eighteen. Um, we didn't add any restrictions. Um, we updated the actual addresses for names of older, um, staples in the city, like Mudis. You probably remember Mudis.
No.
Yeah. Surfside Softy, uh, basically, it, it updated a lot of things that were, that were antiquated on it. We added kiosks to all of the kiosks or, or point of a lot of stuff that happened downtown. Um, with change, we couldn't take it or enforce unless they were listed in the ordinances. So nothing theoretically changed on where you can park.
Okay.
Park. Uh, it's more, uh, cleaning up language. Um, there's a couple of little things in there that, you know, that other people may comment on tonight. And the, out of the, I believe, is, is almost ninety pages. The only thing that really stuck out to us was that they referred to Alpa Road uh, as the Haven Terrace. And the administration hit a home run on this and took all things into consideration and, and, um, it's, it's a lot, a lot of paperwork for a couple word changes, but as far as where your constituents can park and not park.
Okay.
None of that's changed, other than the fact that maybe the location or the address went from a, a name to an actual street address. So it's not restricting or, or adding anything for anybody. It's, it's, it's cleaning up and, and
Okay. Thank you very much, Sean. That's a relief.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other questions, Councillors? Is this part of the public hearing? Seeing none, I have a question for Attorney Egan. Suzanne, on section twenty-two, one seventy-six, penalties for parking violations. Code number twelve is bus stop or taxi stand with a fine of a hundred dollars. And I was wondering if in the, um, in the motion, it would be appropriate if I would amend that to include um, train crossing violation of, in that same code um, of a hundred dollars. So in other words, when the train is crossing with the red lights on, um, if that could be added to that. I know that we looked into that and I believe the state law allows up to three hundred dollars. Um, but I just thought that it would be good to at least get that on the table. Is that something that would be acceptable in your eyes as our counsel?
Um, thank you. The, um, so, chapter ninety, section fifteen already prohibits not stopping at railroad crossings essentially when the lights are flashing. Um, and that it does, you're correct, and it does add a penalty from a hundred to three hundred dollars. We could include that, it, we could include that in this. You could make a, um, amendment to that. It doesn't, because there is a state law prohibiting it, it's not necessary. But you, you could do that. It, it wouldn't be prohibited to do that since the state law is a penalty that is between one hundred and two hundred. You can set that.
Okay. Thank you. That answers my question. Any further questions, Councillors? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for the committee report from our ONA Chair, Counsel Nolan.
Thank you, Madam President. On a motion by Counsel O'Hara, seconded by Counsel Majota, the Ordnance Administration Committee voted by roll call, three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend the city council accept the proposed amendments to the Gloucester Code of Ordinances, Part Two, Chapter Twenty-two, Article Five. Stopping, standing, and parking, in Article Six, Traffic Schedules, based on General Counsel's Memorandums dated August sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two, thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two, and do amend Section Twenty-two, two six nine, stoppage intersections by changing Alpa Road to Haven Terrace. And I so move.
Second.
Second.
Motions made by Counsel Nolan and I think the seconded was Counsel O'Hara? Yes?
Sounds good.
Okay. So I would like to amend the motion by adding that we amend section twenty-two dash one seventy-six penalties for parking violations by adding after bus stop or taxi stand, train crossing violations. And I so move.
Second.
Um, motions made by Gilman, seconded by Counsel Nolan. Is there a discussion on that amendment? Counsel Grow?
I, can I, this is more a question, but I, I'd like to get clarification. We're putting this in a parking, uh, uh, regulation. It's not really a parking regulation. I mean, I, I don't really care one way or the other, but it just seems is, is it, Suzanne, you said it's okay to put it in this, in this, it, it doesn't seem like it counts as parking.
It, so this ordinance relates to, I'm looking, I'm sorry, I, I closed it up and I have to bring it back up. I apologize.
It's, um, page one forty-one of your packet.
Yep.
Article five, stopping, standing, and parking.
Okay, standing. Okay. No, I think you answered my question right there.
Well, that section though says parking violations.
It is, it is a parking, right? So you're correct that this provision of the ordinance really relates to parking, where parking is prohibited. And where that's essentially what this relates to and, and also where it's prohibited, the, the length of time you can park and how that, those parking restrictions are enforced. And as I said before, the state law does provide at chapter ninety, section fifteen, that crossing or crossing a railroad crossing while the lights are flashing is a violation of the state law and subject to a penalty. So what you're doing here is just adding that into a general, I would say it's the use of the streets. That you, you could add it to that because it is just the use of the streets.
Okay. I, again, I, I don't really care. I just, I just wanted to make sure that we're doing the right thing.
Any other discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, uh, roll call vote. Gilman, yes. Gross?
Uh, yeah.
Grow?
Yeah.
Majota?
You should have done the library.
Yes. Yes.
Counsel Memard?
Or why not? Yes.
Counsel Nolan?
Yes. Ding ding.
Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
Counsel O'Neill?
Yes.
Counsel Worthley?
You're muted.
Still muted.
All right, yes.
There you go.
Sorry, it's so hard to do.
So the amendment, the amendment passes nine in favor, zero opposed. So now we're back to the original motion. So is there a discussion, Councillors? Counsel Nolan?
Um, I think that we also have to add the fine. You didn't specify a fine in the amendment.
Oh, it's, it's, it's a hundred. It's, that's what code twelve is.
Right. So it is going to be a hundred. Okay.
Yeah. Um, discussion on the motion, uh, with the amendment now. Uh, Counsel Grow?
I, I just want to say that I know most people think that municipal politics is all about sitting around, eating caviar and drinking champagne um, and living a lifestyle, but I, I really got to hand it to everyone who worked on combing through these regulations. It is mind-numbingly boring and a nearly impossible Sisyphean task to finish it out. I appreciate everything you guys have done, mostly because you've made it so I don't have to do it. But I want to thank you for the effort and, and everybody on ONA having a claw through that mess. And I still can't believe that we had Alpa Way. I mean, I, Haven Terrace, as long as I've lived here, so I'm surprised by that. But good on you.
Aiding yourself there, buddy.
Yeah. Thank you, Counselor. Who else would like to discuss this?
On Alpa Road.
Anyone else like to discuss this? Seeing none? Roll call vote. Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross?
Yes.
Counsel Grow?
Yes.
Counsel Majota?
Yes.
Counsel Memard?
Yes.
Counsel Nolan?
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
Counsel O'Neill?
Yes.
Counsel Worthley?
Yes.
The motion passes nine in favor, zero opposed. Thank you. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Counsel's request to the mayor.
We'll start with, um, Counsel Gilman, and I have none. Counsel Gross?
I got none.
Counsel Grow?
I got nothing.
Counsel Majota?
Uh, just a question more, a question is, um, on the, uh, private road repair. I mentioned the lower half of Gloucester Ave to be repaired and I just wanted to know the timeline um, for that potential repair. I know that typically streets are repaired in the, um, spring and summer, just to have a rough estimate so I can tell my constituents. Other than that, no request.
Thank you, Counselor. Uh, Counsel Memard?
You Scott?
Yes, thank you all. You, you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. You look frozen, but we can still hear you.
Well, that, that's all that counts. I'm getting an increasing number of constituent concerns. Uh, the Mayor's Office is aware of it, the schools are aware of it, but the, uh, water main reconstruction on Mount Pleasant Avenue. is very disruptive, both to the residents who live on Mount Pleasant and the side streets, and also to those of us parents and grandparents who are trying to get our children to East Gloucester School on Davis Street Extension and to pick them back up again. And there's been a request to the school department and to the contractor, through the DPW, to try and coordinate things a little bit better and let people know at some of the major parts of this construction. It's a very challenging thing. Disruption and inconvenience are obviously unavoidable to a large extent, but there is a large outpour of requests that it's more disruptive than it perhaps needs to be. And it becomes a safety issue. And a lot of people haven't kept the original mailing that the DPW sent out to them. But I would just, for the record, list that the Mount Pleasant Avenue contact person for the construction project is the subcontractor, and it's our resident engineer, Matt Kuta, or Kuto. And his telephone number is 978-414-7751. And I'm posting that on Facebook, posting this and otherwise just trying to let people know. But there is, as I said, a lot of frustration and concern about disruption and safety, trying to get kids to school at those two p- times of the day. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Council Nolan?
I just want to wish everybody a very happy and safe Halloween weekend.
Thank you. To you too. Counselor O'Hara?
Thank you. I just want to mention, obviously, we're coming in, we're in cooler weather and with the high price of home heating oil, electricity's skyrocketed, propane, everything's gone up. They have their chimneys inspected before they, before they light their stove or, or their fireplaces. But on the city's part, I've asked that the city inspect the hydrants. It's so important to the fire department and the people who, unfortunate people that may need that fire hydrant, that our hydrants are tested, that we have markers in place, that people find where their hydrant is, make sure the vegetation is cut around it, so that if, if, by, God forbid, that the fire department needs that hydrant, that they can get to it. And also, I, I've noticed at some of the stations...
You were saying at some notifications, the public? And then you cut out Counsel O'Hara.
Yes, thank you. But if, if the fire department can potentially post on the doors, as other departments do, emergency doors, do not park in front, because the public has, I've seen cars parking in front of fire station doors, seconds count, minutes bill. And that could be your house that's going up and you're parked in front of the door. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor O'Neill?
I have no requests at this time.
Thank you, Council Worthley.
Yes, thank you for a great meeting. Couple announcements and then a couple of requests. I want to recognize, and I think we all saw on the newspaper, we have four new police officers, Officer Marks, two ILOs, Noah and Aaron, and Officer Dylan Snell. I think it's been a long time since we've been able to have new officers because of the delays with the academy, and that's going to be helpful to our community. So welcome aboard. I want to give credit to Josh Arnold and for Council Gilman for all the years that she's worked on painting the railing at the Mill River and Mill Pond. Thank you for doing that. And Josh had invited me to be part of that, and I was honored to do that this past weekend. If anybody's walking by or driving by, you'll see a sharp green painting, all done by volunteers, and the DPW did provide the paint. Thank you, Val, for your support on that every year. And also to Mayor Berger and his wife Kelly and all the other volunteers for the fantastic Halloween party events at Stage Four Park. It was really well done. It's great to see all the kids smiling. I have two requests officially. I have no idea why or how or what to do, whatever. We have an exceptional coyote population right now, and there's a lot that aren't doing so well. I don't even know if there's a city role to play, but if there is, I'd like to request the mayor to investigate what our options are to be helpful to displace coy- I don't even know, but just as a problem constituents raising with me, and I wanted to bring that to attention. The other thing is, we have a new school coming. No question about that. Matos Field is to be named at some point. I would like to request the mayor review all the potential improvements to mitigate any traffic issues, if there are any, well in advance before school's open in September, and to start that effort in the incoming months. So that's my request. Thank you.
Thank you. And Council Majota has something very quick to cover, so I'm going to go back to you, Council Majota.
Yes, and a few weeks ago, I, my wife and I made a sort of quick, last minute, a quick decision on moving. We still reside in Gloucester, but I am moving from Ward Three to Ward Four. I will still be able to fulfill my duty as Ward Three Counselor. This is a ward that I've lived in my entire life, so I do love Ward Three. So the city clerk's office will be updating my address on the website. So just wanted to let everyone know.
And, and I just would add that in the city charter, under legislative, it talks about eligibility, and it says any voter shall be eligible to hold the office of Counselor, Ward Counselor, like Council Majota, notwithstanding his removal from one ward in the city to another during the term for which he was elected, may continue to serve and to perform his duties until the expiration of the term for which he was elected. So I just wanted to mention that as part of the charter. And Council Majota, I'm so happy that your team is living in my ward now. So it's very exciting to me. I'll look forward to seeing them at, in their little stroller at the Willow Rest and all around Ward Four. So welcome. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Yeah, congrats.
Awesome. Anyway, Counselors, I want to thank you for quite an intense and, and, and great meeting tonight. Your stick-to-it-ness and attention was really notable. So, and to members of city staff that are here till the end. Thank you, Attorney Egan, our auditor Kenny Costa, Joanne Sinos, and for a job well done. So thank you all. And is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Seconded.
Gross, and then Worthley, seconded. Roll call vote. Gilman, yes. Gross?
Yes.
Grow?
Yep.
Majota?
Yes.
Memhard?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes, Gilman.
O'Hara?
Yes.
O'Neill?
Yes.
Worthley?
Yes, please.
Good night, everybody. Thank you. Happy Halloween.